I think we're good. I think they got it.
It's nine o'clock. We'll call the Tuesday, April 26, 2022, meeting of the Stearns County Commissioners to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance should lie in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So far, so good, Jeff. Let the roll call show that all Commissioners except Steve Notch are present. Next thing we need is approval of the agenda. We do have one addition under the consent agenda. Anyone?
I'll move in.
Moving the agenda approval.
Just a second, a quick question. I didn't get to look at what's on our, our dais. Library isn't coming today. Is that, that's been removed?
Right. The library has been removed. That report has been removed. Any other questions? All in favor of, second five, what's saying aye?
Aye.
opposed, if the motion carries. The next item is our Public Access Forum. Anyone wishing to address the board on issues that are not found on today's agenda may do so at this time. Individual comments will be limited to three to four minutes. The board members will not engage in dialogue with speakers, but rather refer the matter to, to the appropriate county department. A citizen may speak at the Public Access Forum once per month. Is there anyone here for Public Act? Please give your name and address.
My name is Dawn Jensen. I live at 19413 Florence Circle in Munson Township. The Wakefield-Munson Township border runs through the neighborhood where I live. And because of Munson's December moratorium, I believe we were able to prevent three, possibly four, new short-term rentals, just on my little circle alone. However, I believe two of those are waiting out the moratorium to see what the ordinance, what any ordinance would look like. One of those removed their IUP application after the moratorium. They already have several rentals in Wilmer, and I understand they have moved into their property in order to rent out the basement for now. The other is a weekend neighbor from the city who's interested in renting hers out. Again, I think they're trying to wait us out. And we have a little circle. That's two, we had two house sales. We know the other, there were many other higher offers that were from business owners that wanted to rent them out, that were told of the moratorium, and they withdrew their offers. So within a very short period of time, we would have had, you know, easily three or four on my little circle, just my little piece of it. We're very close to another one, just down the street and around the, around the bay there, so, which has been a problem. There are now five townships with moratoriums. We are putting a tremendous amount of effort into trying to manage this at our local levels, but it's time for the county to match that effort. First, per last month's meeting minutes, vacation home discussion is being pushed to a future agenda in September or October. This timeframe is unacceptable to us at this point, unless there is a county moratorium in place as we requested in last month's meeting. At this point, we're looking at another summer of problems with both permitted and non-permitted short-term rentals. And we really want to get them banned on, ultimately banned, on our, on the Shoreland Overlay District. Second, we are requesting a change to the ordinance before any township or county moratorium expires to permanently ban them in the Shoreland Overlay, Shoreland Overlay, Shoreland Overlay District. Third, we are requesting that the county diligently address the lack of oversight, reporting structure, and consequences for current permitted and non-permitted short-term rentals. They've been nothing but headaches for us. We, the sheriff doesn't have time to be running out there for every little thing that they are actually not responsible for. There's just such a huge gray area, and it has fallen on the neighbors to try and police these situations. Again, it's time for the county to match the efforts that we've been putting into across the townships and try and manage the situation before it gets totally out of control. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for Public Access Forum?
Hi, my name is Mike Sockery, and I live at 11555 39th Avenue Northwest, Rice, Minnesota. And I'm basically here to talk about and plant a seed for, I know you, you, you as a group have been working on this property to the north of the Mississippi River Park. And I, I really think it's an absolute natural for that property to be put into park use. And I know that my neighbor, Steve, and his partners here are good guys, and they're developers, and they're working on developing it. But just for the generations ahead, for our children, our grandchildren, generations to come, that property would be a much better fit for, to extend the park to the north. Across the river from there, you've got a whole bunch of wildlife park property right now, which is being managed by the state of Minnesota and the Benton County. If we could extend the park to the north, we would come up with almost two miles of pretty much undeveloped river frontage. And I know that these guys have bought the property. You were working with the brokers, I believe, and they did not sell it to you. They sold it to these other developers. And it would make super sense to try to see what number they would want to, if the county could buy it from them and go ahead and do with what you had talked about for a number of years. You had developed a plan to put that property as part of the park. It's very seldom that you get a piece of property that's basically raw property that has not been developed. You're sitting on Mississippi River, which is a huge plus. It's still there. It's undeveloped yet, and this would be the time to, to move forward, I believe. I know that, I hate to step on toes or even push it against someone who's trying to develop, something development is good for the county, it's good for the state. But at some point, we really are going to be kicking ourselves in the fanny if we allow that property to not get attached to that park. You look around the county, you see numerous apartment buildings going up all over, and these people are going to want to have places to enjoy, and I think that is a natural. You already have part of your infrastructure there for the park. To extend it would add a lot, and I, and I know that you guys have been working on it, and I think it's important that we keep working on it and see what you can do, see what they would want to buy them out and go ahead and proceed. So I know you can't have a discussion on it, I guess, I think you just said, but, so, I, where, how do we, how do we go about doing something like this? I, you can't answer? I don't know how that works, but very important. I think we would be doing the wrong thing if we don't, and if not get all of it, a good portion of it, along that riverfront would be important. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Again, for items not on today's agenda.
Good morning. My name is Mary Lou Terway. I live at 21417 Forest Hill Road in Richmond, which is Munson Township. Ordinance 439, Section 12, titled Enforcement, provides guidance and remedies for those violating the ordinance. This section of the ordinance was written to protect our citizens against violators of 439 and not just to take up space on the page. We ask that the ordinance be applied as written. Historically, application of Section 12 has been nonexistent. Why? Because its application to violations is fully at the discretion of this commission, and you have chosen to disregard it. The result of this disregard is that Stearns County citizens continue to be impacted in that we have lost our right to live in an R1 zone, zone area free from commercial businesses that interfere with our daily lives. This is especially profound because 439 is written to protect against such invasive businesses. While a soft approach is being used to address properties in violation, it is clear by the increasing numbers of properties in violation that this soft approach is too often ineffective. Proof is that notified parties continue to advertise and rent after receiving a warning letter. It simply isn't working. Our ask is simple. Follow and apply the law as it is written. If you can't or won't enforce 439, then I submit short-term rentals to be banned entirely. We request that you enact moratorium for Shoreland Overlay District short-term rentals so that this entire process can be reviewed from permitting to violations enforcement. The ordinance should be amended to protect the public's needs and rights. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Joe Cocklum, and I live on 18579 Long Lake Road, Richmond, in Eden Township. And Eden, by the way, just put in a moratorium against vacation rentals by owner. An injustice is in the works, and you have the authority to correct it. While the planning committee voted to approve the IUP for Graygell Coles after long discussion, it just does not seem right for many reasons. Number one, this property has been renting out unlicensed on many occasions over the past years. I do not understand the logic of the planning and zoning committee that approved this IUP. What kind of a message does this send to anyone who intends to rent without a permit? If they think I'll, I'll get, if I get caught, the worst that will be is I need to get a permit. Number two is I think you need to take a close look at this lot size. It's only 16,000 square feet or one-
Okay, ma'am, I believe this is on today's agenda.
Oh, okay. Then I can speak then?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Is there anyone else here for items that are not on today's agenda?
Good morning. My name is Teresa Bransner, and I'm from, I live at 21067 Elkview Circle, Richmond. And I want to address four items that are of concern by us full-time residents in regard to the short-term vacation rental industry that's moving into our neighborhoods, and I'm going to call it what it is. It's an industry, and they advertise on Airbnb, and they advertise through Verbo, and they're using, or it's, it's just like a golden goose egg coming into our neighborhood. So people are, are coming in, and it's an industry that's taking over our neighborhoods. The first one is compliance and lack of thereof. We as full-time residents are concerned and question the county and the townships even, their ability and their inability to effectively establish, monitor, and provide oversight of compliance to ordinances, IUPs, and operations of the short-term vacation rentals. In regard to the lack of oversight, it's demonstrated through the number of illegal vacation rentals that are currently already in operation without an IUP in place. When there's no enforcement of ordinances and IUP specifications through oversight, the ordinance itself is mute. The vacation rental industry issues are broad, they're wide, they vary from each neighborhood. Residents question the availability of resources and the power, manpower of both the county and the townships to adequately address the implementation, the oversight, and the compliance necessary of operation in our residential neighborhoods. We are very thankful that our townships have set moratoriums, and we're attempting to address the resident, they are attempting to address the residents' concerns. Under the current Stearns County ordinance in process, residents' concerns are not being addressed. So we as residents are requesting that a moratorium, possibly a ban, be placed by Stearns County until there's an effort made to achieve resolve. We're finding through our research of this, of the short-term vacation rental industry that many areas are now banning short-term vacation rentals just simply because of the non-compliance, lack of oversight with ordinances, especially in residential neighborhoods. The bans are occurring only after the fact, when, when residents are forced to become active due to the inactivity from their governing bodies to properly oversee and enforce compliance. The current compliance comes at the expense of the neighbors, who are forced to put up with the vacation rentals in their neighborhoods with no insurance, no assurance of ordinance and permit oversight to ensure adherence to them. It becomes the residents' job, our job, to monitor and report non-compliance, something we did not apply for. We're witness to many examples of non-compliance. A perfect example is the case that's coming up later in, on your agenda. If any permit should have been denied, that one should have been due to the many issues that were not in compliance. Yet some members of the Planning and Zoning Board overlooked the facts. They did not take into consideration the number of neighbors that were citing violations, and they went ahead with a yes vote. We are, and number two, we are requesting that Stearns County demonstrate an effort, as our townships are, to resolve the vacation rental industry issue by putting in place a moratorium or a ban until more effective ordinance and permit requirements can be possibly developed and instituted. We are now coming up on almost eight months as residents, attending meetings, researching, requesting, effective addressing of the vacation rental issue facing us next door. Townships are demonstrating an effort, and we are requesting the same of our county. The third area of concern is the stewardship and the protection of the environment of the Minnesota lakes. Short-term vacation rentals are not compatible with the area of stewardship as they increase transancy into and onto our Minnesota lakes. There's an increased risk of transfer of invasive species into our lake waters, increased trash in and around the lakes, increased number of people using septic systems weekly. Statistics dated through the Minnesota Land Trust site shows a lack of stewardship taking place not only on our lakes, but our Minnesota prairie lands and our wetlands due to past allowances of an operation of certain entities. They come in, and they're allowed to operate under the guise of economics. Minnesota's wildlife habitat is also under siege. It's literally ironic that all or a major portion of this is run through our Minnesota counties' environmental services departments. What occurs down the road becomes an after the fact that something should have been done to eliminate the destruction to the environment and our state's lakes. Again, we are requesting a moratorium or a ban until a more in-depth research can be done and this entire issue effectively addressed. Number four, why is it that the Environmental Services Department is still processing applications and sending them through for approval from townships that have set moratoriums in place? We as residents were told that the township restrictions would take precedent in this matter. This again demonstrates a lack of effort by the county to work together with the townships and the residents most involved in order to come to resolve on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address, again, items that are not on today's agenda?
Mike Bean, 24596 County Road 9, Richmond, Minnesota. I'm on the town board, the board of planning and zoning. We are making progress on ours, and I think what we're going to do is put ours together, which is going to come pretty soon, and then we're going to give it to you guys, and you can do what you want with it. One, I have to address that I think is, is wrong. If you have, just say, a gig for doing something wrong, whatever, you know, it's pretty easy for somebody to just say, well, there was music too loud. We have to be able to stop the false claims. We're going to have that in ours, you know, just so you know. We want to make sure that there, if there is a problem, that there is a problem, not just randomly. I don't know if you guys got the paper we, somebody sent that to Stearns County. We got it reversed, and they said there was a lot of false claims in there, or false accusations. Like, we'll give that to you also when we are done with ours, whatever. We want to make sure it's for everybody, not just, you know, everybody in the township, not just a few people or whatever. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I just have a couple sentences. Name and address, please.
My name is Lee Stackman. I live at 20929 Elkview Circle, Munson Township. I've lived there for 25 years, been involved with the lakes ever since I was a child, vacationing there, having good times at the resorts. My problem is in 2000, or what I want to say is in 2020, February 20th, I spoke of my, to the, of my opposition to short-term rentals to the planning, the Stearns County Planning Commission at that, on that date. That was the first one that was on Elkview Circle. I spoke of my opposition, and basically what they did, and what bothers me is, when I sat down, I, I spoke through, there was a number of people there, I spoke through the whole time of the reasons not to approve these short-term rentals. When I sat down, the planning commission amongst themselves said to me, or not to me directly, amongst themselves, you're bound to hear, we're bound to hear some feedback, negative feedback from the residents. And believe me, it's, it's blossomed into this, with a lot of people spending a lot of time and your time and money trying to regulate, regulate this. And it's time to put a moratorium on it, like the other ladies have said. And one other thing, after, after I spoke to the planning commission, Stearns County, the next day I went to my Munson Township trustee and explained the problem to him. He said that, at that time, he said, it's an issue that we have to start with, with Munson Township, the planning commission there. That was over two years ago, and, and here we are, still talking about it. So again, I ask you to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you. Hi, thank you all for your time. Joe DeRose, 21026 State Highway 22, Richmond, Minnesota. Our family, or my wife and I own Riverside Resort, and appreciate your time. I'm sorry that you guys have to hear this. I know a lot of you guys have got, or got my email yesterday. I'm not going to rehash all that, but I do want, I see both sides of this issue, and I hope I can provide some insight to the concerned neighbors and also support for short-term rental permitted operators. Concerned neighbors, I feel weird not being able to see them, but I absolutely understand your points. I feel them, I experience them, I'm financially impacted by short-term rentals in my community. Full disclosure on this, I, I am also on the board for about the last five years of Hospitality Minnesota. It's a statewide organization that promotes and lobbies for hospitality in the state. They started about a year ago, a task force specifically to address short-term rentals in our state. And there's a diverse group of hotel people that despise short-term rentals, of short-term rental owners, of property managers. It's a diverse group that is seeking compromise, and we're, but we're working together, we're not attacking each other. And just so you guys know, just yesterday, we finalized our lists of recommendations. That's going to be presented to every county in the state. You can choose to do with those what you want, but you guys have done a fantastic job setting this up, and I just wanted to highlight that to some of these concerned neighbors. I feel like the approach that they've taken these last few months, in my perspective, has been borderline disrespectful to not only you guys of all the work that you've done, but to us in the industry. Like they mentioned, for the past eight months, they've been at meeting after meeting after meeting, and then last March, they expressed concern that their voice isn't being heard. We now have five town, or townships that have moratoriums. An IUP got revoked in February. This one, now that we're going to talk about soon, is in question. You were being heard loud and clear. I fear that your continual attacks on short-term rentals, regardless of if they pertain to you or not, is driving away your supporters. It, it did for me, because I was your ally, and I can't really get behind this movement anymore. I feel this sense of not feeling heard might just simply come from being misinformed, not, not fully educated on the issues. Just so they know, Stearns County was the absolute first county in the state to establish IUPs for short-term rentals. My father, who sits here, helped with setting up those ordinances. They are one of the most restrictive in the state currently at, at the application process. We're not the most restrictive, I won't say that, but it's much more than just going to the town, the courthouse and filling out a form. The process works, as you know, an IUP did get revoked in February because of some complaints. The process is in place, that is in place, is working. Is it perfect? Probably not, but that's what we're all working toward, and we're all, are all working very diligently at it. So the fact that they're saying, please step up to the plate, we've been at the plate for a long time. So yeah, like I said, you will be getting those recommendations soon. Even some of their concerns that they've been bringing up have been ever escalating, but they started as really not factual, like the township member had mentioned, there's been a lot of inaccuracies. They started with wanting to demand that short-term rentals are, have higher property taxes. Done, we always have. That just wasn't, they weren't educated on that area. Now it's gotten into they don't want them in residentially zoned areas. My understanding from you guys, that I've always heard is you want them zoned residential because you guys have more operational control and can revoke a license if necessary. So I don't know if they're educated on that. Maybe, maybe your stance has changed, and maybe I'm inaccurate, but now I've been hearing complaints that they fear of criminals and sex offenders coming in to stay into these lodging establishments. I'm not really familiar with the criminal or sex offender world, but they usually don't seek luxury, luxury lake homes as their place for their shenanigans. In the last 15 years, since 2008, when Stearns County started this short-term rental operation, there's been one or two documented or official complaints. So this is an industry that doesn't get complaints as much as other areas. In the 95 years that our resort has been in place, those two major worst-case scenario concerns have not manifested themselves. So I feel like they're stirring a pot of potential issues that doesn't exist. I know that you guys are wise enough to not dig into worst-case scenarios, otherwise this county wouldn't approve anything if we always look at what could possibly go wrong. You know, I could get struck by lightning when I leave. I'm going to leave the building. It's not practical to live that way. My renters are not criminals, they're actually you guys. Last month, they mentioned how they stayed in a VRBO in both Florida and Arizona, some of them throughout the winter. Why is it okay for, or important for you to have vacation homes available when you go on vacation, but not for others when they come stay at Stearns County? Not everyone has the opportunity to purchase a lake home, but in my opinion, those people still have value, and they have the opportunity to enjoy our natural resources. So we're only a couple of months into these moratoriums that, that are year-long, and I just want to emphasize patience, let the process play out, we're all working on it. The fact that they say step up to the plate was, I was kind of offended by. Wise decisions rarely happen quickly. Things are in place, things will change. Please be patient. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Jim Hatches, 31128 163rd Avenue, Avon. I'm just representing, we are vacation rental owners. We've owned for five-plus years. We've had hundreds of people from all over the country, from Hong Kong, from South America, from Europe, come and stay with us, and have not had a single problem in five years. People have been very generous to us. They come back and visit, they come into the area, they spend money. We have delivery people coming up our driveway pounding on our door because we rent out a lower level in the end of our house because people are ordering food. So they, they support the local businesses. And I just, I can, I can see a little bit of the concern of the unknown, but let's talk facts. This is our experience, this has happened. We have not had any issues. We purchased a second home and just got that permitted just over a year ago. The neighbors were concerned there also. And one year long, I've talked to the neighbors- And one year long, I've talked to the neighbors, not one issue. The concern was drugs, garbage. Well, we picked up garbage, but it's not from the people staying at our place. So I, I acknowledge the concern of people because they don't understand it. But if you do not just get on the internet, look at the negative things about vacation rentals, but all the opportunity it gives people can't afford to buy places to come up and visit. We have neighbors that have rented our places for family. When they come in, they can't house everybody. So it's not just, it's not just criminals coming in our areas. People that live here are coming back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address?
Jim DeRose, 21026 State, sorry. I've given a resort address. Mine, mine is 21026 Edgedale Court in Munson Township. And I was active at the Minnesota Resort Association since the 1980s, mid 80s. And vacation home rentals were a big issue. We were against them. We were sold for many years that, you know, we should be licensed and you have guidelines to follow and many of them. But the best one is when you're traveling, you turn on the water, you want to know that it's good and safe. That's why we have the inspections. And that what our fees went to was to make sure we had a good operating business. And we came at it that these vacation rentals aren't regulated. And whenever we approached the state, they were like, okay, we agree, but nothing ever got done. So then in 2008, Stearns County did come up with a licensing process. And I looked at that and I said, this is good. You get laid out the criteria, I'll be glad to follow them. And that can be regulated. And I was even brought up at that meeting that you get so many complaints, you know, we may not renew your license, just like any license. We never had any issues. We, we try to be good citizens. And like my son said, all the years I, when I had the vacation home rentals, we had a lot of nice people come, spent a lot of money in the county. And the good operator, the people I know are good operators. I don't know the bad ones, if there are. Those people should be dealt with. If they're not licensed, I've been hearing that, that should be dealt with. They shouldn't be renting their home. And, but where does the government draw the line on that? If my brother wants to come up with his family and stay at my house, but there's more people there than my house is built for. Should the county come in and say, get them out of here? When I drive around the weekends, especially on 4th of July, it's unbelievable how many people have campers in their yards, under chain of lakes. Many of them, they're packed in there, you know, should that be regulated? Probably so. But getting back to vacation rentals, again, the operators I know, they don't want, they have that investment, they don't want somebody to wreck it. They're going to take care of it. I know some have cameras on their houses, some have cameras as speakers and they police it themselves. If they're not, again, if, if it is. I think the biggest concern is you don't want a party house right next door to yours. I, I like to sleep at night, that'd be a huge issue to me. So I think the concern is what if somebody out of the area buys it and it turns into be a party house? Again, it's a hassle, but it should be dealt with. They shouldn't be licensed. But I think there should be a way to, to deal with this. I don't know if you get a committee of, you know, owners and then people, the renters, but there should be a way to deal with it. I don't think an outright ban is the answer. I live in a cul-de-sac and if a neighbor decided to have people rent this property, that's fine. Again, as long as they weren't disrespectful. But again, I know citizens that have parties and maybe get out of line sometimes. So there's got to be an answer here. But I do, I sympathize, some of the things they said was, yeah, I wouldn't want that in my neighborhood either. But how do we regulate it? So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Good morning, my name's Robin Hanchus, 31128 163rd Avenue in Avon. I'm married to Jim. We have, we run three vacation rentals, two are in our house that we live in and then our lake home. And I know there was a lot of concern, a lot of fear from the neighbors. I mean, they came back, I mean, we were just surprised because we, the first time that we went through with the home that we live in and having them, our neighbors didn't have an issue. In fact, two of our neighbors wrote letters saying, you know what? There's, there was more traffic when we all had teenagers than, than with the vacation rental. I, I think that, like Jim said, over the last year and a half that we've been allowing people to use our lake home when we're not using it, there hasn't been issues. These, you know, these people are, it is, it is, it is us. It's us when we go on vacation and we've used them as well and we take good care of it. We're being raided when we're guests and we go and use a VRBO or an Airbnb. That VRBO is raiding us at what kind of guest we were. Did we leave it in good condition? You know, did we follow the rules? And if we didn't and we get a two-star, then the next aren't going to want to rent to us. And so I also was just, one of the things that's come to me is, I, I think the uproar, or maybe some of the fear from some of the people that are here, might be about the unlicensed. You know, those of us that have jumped through the hoops, we've, we've jumped through the hoops. You know, our septic is fine, our, our water is good. You know, we're making sure that they come through every year and check that we have fire extinguishers and that our smoke alarms are working and that, you know, we're, we're being regulated and we're paying the fees as well. I think that if there's 20 of us that are licensed, or 21, I'm not sure what the exact number is, in Stearns County, we all know that if you look on the VRBO and the Airbnb and that Evolve sites, there are a lot more that are running that are not. And maybe that's where the fear, you know, is coming in. Maybe that's where there's some parties that are not. But it's not happening at our, it's not happening at our, our places. We've been in contact with many that are licensed and they have the same, you know, the same MO that we have. Our guests come, they're kind people, we love our guests and we're not having issues. So I would say maybe to focus maybe toward getting the rest of those into, you know, the pot where they are regulated, just the way we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at the open forum? Anyone else?
Good morning. I'm Rodney Atkinson, the address is 3108th Street Southeast. My wife and her brothers and sisters have a place about three, four away from this one. I don't know the address, but I didn't know it was a debate about the rental thing. I thought it was specifically about this case.
Yeah, that's, this case is going to come up later.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, this ain't that one on Dairywood. Oh, sorry about that.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at open forum? Anyone else? Anyone else at open forum? All right, thank you, everyone. With that, then, Mike, you are on here, you'd like to make an announcement. Mike's going to make a little bit of announcement here.
Yep.
Before we go to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was informed last week that Governor Walz signed a proclamation declaring today, April 26th, as County Government Appreciation Day. And that came from the Association of Minnesota Counties. And they say, congratulations to the more than 36,000 county employees and officials in Minnesota's 87 counties for this well-deserved honor and recognizing the hard work and dedication demonstrated every day by providing these essential services that create healthy, safe and vibrant communities. Sounds like they looked at our Mr. Statement and doesn't. And the proclamation, excuse me, the proclamation says Minnesota's 87 counties employ over 36,000 people to provide essential services, again, to create healthy, safe and vibrant communities. The work of county employees is fundamental, whether it's newborn, well-checked by a public health nurse, a passport renewal or voter registration and ballot processing. And through their commitment to public service, county employees dedicate their time, skills and expertise for the benefit of their neighbors, at times risking their personal safety to coordinate emergency management or manage justice and public safety systems. The vital work that counties do promotes healthy communities, fosters conditions for economic growth, strengthens infrastructure and improves residents' quality of life. So I just wanted to make sure that we took this short opportunity to recognize your work, the board and the, and the work of all of our employees. And really what they do every day is try to make people's lives better. So County Government Appreciation Day.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mike, thank you for that, reading that because, you know, we got a, a good number of people in the county that, that, that go above and beyond the duties that they should. You know, whether it be the Sheriff's Department, Human Services, even licensing, environmental. And, you know, oftentimes, you know, we don't, we, we hear about it, we don't necessarily always get the chance to say, hey, we appreciate you doing what you're doing. So, yeah, by all means, we have those folks working above and beyond what they could, behind their desk, in their car, online, whatever it is. So greatly appreciated.
With that, we're going to move then to the consent agenda. We do have an addition, renewal application for another off-sale license or on-sale wine license on Rice Lake, Fisher's Resort and Campout. Is there anything on the consent agenda? Any other additions?
Yes.
I would like to pull item number 10 for discussion.
All right.
And then that, that item that you just mentioned would be item number 16?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Do we have any motion then on the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda, pulling item 10 and adding number 16.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
One second, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mike, I have one question for you on item number two. I may have to abstain on part of that. If you look at those licenses, the Farming Baseball Club is one of the applicants there. Should I designate that I'm abstaining on that portion?
What is your role with that?
I'm, help manage the team.
Can we just modify the motion and, and accept we're pulling that?
Sure.
Okay, that'd be fine with me.
Right, I mean, if you, you're given an understandable reason, so maybe we just hold that and we can just go to a separate question.
All right, we'll see.
That's better than asking if you partake in beverages.
Thanks, Joe. All right, so the motion then would be everything except that portion.
Two and 10, yes.
Two and 10.
Two and 10, okay, all right. Let's, all those in, in favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, then, can we go to number two?
I'll, I'll move passage of number two.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to have to abstain on all of them then? Okay, that's fine. Is there a second on that motion?
One second, ma'am.
Okay. So all those in favor signify with saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And I am abstaining. All right, thank you, it passes. Okay, then, discussion on item number 10, Mr. Persky?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, number 10, with the rezoning, that, that came to the Planning Commission on Thursday. And coming to the Planning Commission on Thursday, you know, there were a number of great questions about that property and, and how it was going to be developed and a number of issues pertaining, particularly to the sensitive area, the environmentally sensitive area, also the, the issue on park-led dedication, the number of lots, the density. And so I just was wondering, Angie, you're standing there. Would it be possible, I, I'm not saying to vote against this. What I'm saying is that would it hurt at all to delay the, the rezoning? I'm just, I'm curious, would we be able to meet the timeline expectation if we would wait one, one session on this perhaps? And maybe have the ability for the environmental and parks to work out some of the details that pertain to the property? In particular, as we have all these people here today that are very sensitive about the environment and its impact, especially as to the lakes on these vacation home rentals on the shoreline. I mean, the tremendous impact that a development such as this would have on the area we're talking about just north of our own park and on the Mississippi River. Again, my question is not to be necessarily in opposition to it, but just to give us a little bit more time to perhaps look at how that would be constructed.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to address Angie Berg, Environmental Services? The item in front of you today is action to consider a rezoning and it's for a sliver of property that would be proposed to go from R5 to R1. Much of the discussion at the Planning Commission meeting last week related to the park dedication requirement, which is something that will get sorted out with the plat at next month's Planning Commission meeting. So to answer your question, Commissioner Persky, yes, the application could be tabled. We actually have under the 60 days until July to make a decision. But I just want to be clear to the board that the rezoning is a separate, independent decision from the plat and from the park dedication. And so this decision on the rezoning is completely separate from the plat.
So it really wouldn't affect what Commissioner Persky is talking about?
In my opinion, no, it would not.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, Angie, would that affect the, the number of lots? We had somebody question at the Planning Commission as far as the number of lots that would actually be developed. Because going from an R5 to an R1, doesn't that allow also the ability to restrict as far as the number of lots that would be in the R5 opposed to the R1?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, so one of the reasons that the developer is proposing to add a little strip of R1 is to push the building potentially back from the river. And so wherever the home is located, that's the credit that, the, that you need to be in. So if you're in the R1, you're in an R1 zoning district and your home is located there, it doesn't get counted against the R5. So it could be, Commissioner Persky, that if this area is not, this small strip is not rezoned, that it could affect an R5 credit. However, my belief in looking through the plans and our staff working with the developer is that it would likely, they would retain their R5 credits and they would just push the homes closer to the river, which would be allowed. So that's our understanding of their proposal.
Okay, Mr. Chair. And, and my, my concern would be is, is that, by all means, I would first of all support a, a greater set pack from the river, from the bluff. And that's what this would do, but the reality would be is, is that that necessarily going to happen? Because if, if you can move it, whether it's a small lot or a large lot, as close as possible to the river, that, then, then, then the argument is, is not valid. If it, otherwise, it, again, it would make these lots more attractive than, than they otherwise would be. By all means, again, I'm not opposed to, to the development of the property. Obviously, we have a huge interest as far as the parkland is concerned as, as, as we have the abutting property. Also knowing that the natural area that is and, and Mr. Sockery talking about, you know, the undisturbed property, both sides of the river, two miles of undisturbed property, we would like to see have a minimum impact on that. So again, I would support if, if, if it doesn't hurt, negotiations between Environmental Park Commission, Plan, our Parks Director, you know, continuing to move forward on what's going to happen on this property, there's no need necessarily to, to approve it today.
Mr. Chair, I would just also like to share with you that Steve Leggett is here. He's the applicant or the property owner. We did ask him to attend in anticipation for this item being pulled in case you'd like to hear from him. This is not a public hearing, but typically if you have questions for the applicant, you have done that in the past.
Okay, all right. Mr. Leggett?
Good day, Steve Leggett, 42076 County Road 1, Rice, Minnesota, Brockway Township. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Yeah, today's, you know, is, is strictly a vote on the rezoning element. Just to give you a little precursor to it, before we purchased the property, we actually spoke with the county, discussed the, you know, any inabilities to develop it. So again, obviously, before we vested in that, we did our homework on things. We then proceeded to both meet with the township and do the preliminary plat. Meeting with the county, that was done on March 2nd of 2022. Again, we gathered additive information on what steps we would have to go through. We did all the necessary items with going to the township in order for the township to sign off on the rezoning. They did their checklist. And again, the checklist also includes impacts to, you know, the, the surrounding areas, the environs. areas, the environment, things like that. All those checkmarks were met. From there, we moved on to the Planning Commission. And I guess even before we get to that, I should note that during these meetings with the county, and Jennifer's not here today, but, and to give her credit, she's been doing a great job guiding us. I think she's probably, there were some things that she may have missed simply because of the complexities with trying to develop something of this nature, and some unknown elements within ordinances. So it was unfortunate that we got tardy information in regards to some of this, but I can tell you Jennifer's been doing a great job. And again, with it being County Person Day, that another accolade to how the Environmental Services have been working with us. The element of, actually Jennifer was the one that gave myself, who again is spearheading this development, Jennifer, Environmental Service staff, was the one that gave me the recommendation to look at rezoning and moving the R1/R5 line. And she did that specifically for that added flexibility, to be able to move that house potentially further away from the water if someone so desired. She was also very specific about the amount we moved that line as not to give us any additive ability to further split those lots and create more lots. So there was a very strategic movement in this line, and it was guided by county staff. And then at that point, we took it before Planning Commission, just a few days ago, and they too went through all the information, they went through the checklist, and checked everything off, and approved the rezoning. So again, I feel like we've literally done everything that's been asked of us. All the checkmarks have been checked off. And again, we just simply asked that you focus on the rezoning, you know, the additive or the futuristic park elements are something else. And again, I think that we've teed this up as far as the rezoning relative to input from the staff, and had the adequate township and Planning Commission approval on it. So, and to reference Joe, as we discussed in the Planning Commission the other day, again, this discussion is technically totally something totally separate from today's discussion to rezoning, but we are and will be sitting down with the county to try to come up with a cooperative effort that will best suit both parties in regards to the land adjacent to the park when that time comes. However, we're not there yet. And again, this rezoning has no impact on the number of lots in which we can create. We can actually, we can still implement our plat without the rezoning, it's just that we're going to have the lack of flexibility to slide the house further away from the waterfront. So again, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer in regards to those.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Leggett, thank you for coming in and clarifying that today.
Thank you.
I do appreciate your efforts, you know, to allow for those homes to be brought further back away from the shoreline. I mean, that is something, of course, we'd like to see. But oftentimes, the intent that people have in a proposal doesn't always happen after the fact. And I just want to make sure that if we're going to be seating that, that truly it is a step that helps protect the environment. I believe you live on the river, and Mr. Sockery, you folks might even be neighbors or what it is, you know how much of a jewel that is. And you know that the county has been looking at that piece of property for decades. And we had a master plan in which incorporated that piece that you're developing, actually as a part. We spent several tens of thousands of dollars to do that. So don't take this personal. I want you to understand that what I'm representing is I'm representing the people that had a dream about protecting that shoreline, and seeing that between here and the Gulf of Mexico, that there is preservation of that type of shoreline, that in 100 years from now, people will come down that river and it look like it does today, whether you're on a canoe, whether you're on a rowboat, whether you're on a pontoon, or whether you're on a speedboat, okay, it's going to be beautiful. And I just, I just see this as the potential for encroachment on that. And by all means, I want to encourage you then to have that conversation with the county as far as how we can best make sure we can preserve that, but that let those people that do develop, allow them to have their homes there as well. So thank you.
Angie, is there anything else here that you wish to add? Anybody have a motion on this item, Lee?
Yeah, I'd move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, roll call, Randy?
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Aye.
Commissioner Persky?
Nay.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
It's half of three to one.
Thank you. All right. I think I would propose that we would take a break now rather than after the next public hearing, which I anticipate may take a while, since our public access form took a little longer than normal here. And the Great River Regional Library will not be presenting today. They will be presenting, I think, in May. Right, good. We're going to adjourn right now, five minutes.
Jeff, I think this is the first time I've ever seen...
All right, here we go. We'll resume the county board meeting. Our next item. Our next item is E1, which is a public hearing. Conduct a public hearing for interim use permit applications submitted by Joseph and Kelsey Gregelko of Albertville, Minnesota. Angie, would you give us an update, please, or an overview?
Good morning, Angie Berg, Environmental Services. The Planning Commission heard a interim use permit for Joseph and Kelsey Gregelko at their meeting last week, and their recommendation was to approve. I'm sorry, this was not heard last week. This was heard on March 22nd. So our recommended board action for you today is to conduct your public hearing, discuss the Planning Commission findings, approve, deny, or table the request, and then lastly, direct staff to develop findings of fact for consideration at a future meeting. The deadline for action to comply with the 60-day rules is June 14th. The Vacation Home Rental is located on Dairywood Road, Pearl Lake, Main Prairie Township. And Mr. Dennis Lowen, Township Supervisor, is here, so he's going to be addressing the board first. So I don't want to steal his thunder, but as other speakers have noted today, the township did enact a moratorium, as I shared with you by email last week on April 12th. And the department and the county attorney's office have sorted this concept out, and this will actually address some of the concerns I heard during Public Access. So when a moratorium is enacted by a township, that does not prevent the county from following our 60-day rule. So if an application for land use and zoning comes in, in the state of Minnesota, the local government has to act on that within 120 days. So a township enacting a moratorium does not stop the county's obligation to act within the 120 days. So because a year is longer than 120 days, these applications can continue to come in, in these townships with moratoriums, despite the fact that's a moratorium in place. So to that point, the county could obviously use the moratorium as one of your findings, if that is a concern to you. Secondly, because the department is also the licenser of food, beverage, and lodging establishments such as vacation home rentals, food, beverage, and lodging licenses are not being issued in townships that have a moratorium. This has been explained, and will continue to be explained, to applicants and to townships. So for example, this Gregelko application today, if the board would approve the land use permit, the county will send a letter indicating the land use permit has been issued. However, the lodging license will not be issued until the township ordinance is complied with. So that, I understand, is very frustrating and confusing to people, but that is the position that the county is taking after consulting with our attorney's office months ago. So with that, we do have a lot of speakers here today. I have a list of them, so we can start, and then I'll queue up as we go, so we can kind of keep a routine going. And then I can present the written comments, either now or at the end. Mr. Chair, that's up to you.
Why don't you, can you give an overview on the written comments? No?
Yes.
You might save some time.
Okay, so we did receive yesterday 26 template letters opposed related to safety, private road, parking of extra vehicles, dog attacks, environmental noise, trespassing, pets running loose, and trash left on beach. That, again, was submitted by 26 property owners, and that all of their names and all of their letters are hereby incorporated into the official record. We also received letters in opposition from Russ and Linda Miller, Dave Dixon, and Laura Kuzemi. We have Jim and Robin Henshess in support, Joe DeRose Riverside Resort supports, and Sue Gregory supports. So those are all public comments that came in after the Planning Commission meeting. So in your packet, we divided them between Planning Commission and the county board. These are the recent ones. And I can find my packet page, and when I come back up at the end, I can share what page that's on. So with that, Mr. Chair, if you want to start the public testimony, I would suggest we start with Dennis Lowen from Main Prairie Township, and then next up would be Don Jensen.
Okay, so we need to open the public hearing?
Yes.
At this point, we'll open the public hearing, and Mr. Lowen.
Good morning. I am Dennis Lowen, Main Prairie Township. I read through your ordinance, and I think you have a very good start. I want to be clear on that. The whole issue, you know, from the township perspective, is trying to find some balance in allowing these things. I began this as being indifferent to them. I do know that there's a few in my neighborhood, whether or not they were permitted by the county. One was, I did find that out. But separating the wheat from the chaff at public hearings is always a key issue here. We will be addressing this, and probably more restrictive than the county at this point. One of the things we're considering is allowing the use two weeks a month. And our reason for that is, you're seeing a lot of these parcels being purchased by investment groups. In fact, 18% of houses sold, single-family dwellings sold in the United States last year were by investment groups or people with the ability to access funds that others can't. And I heard that this morning, when I was paying attention to what the market's doing. So thinking about that, is there other things the county should be considering with this? Is it affordable to continue down this path? It was mentioned earlier by someone that people want to be on the lake. So do I. Looked at it. Rather have farmland than make sure of property. When I choose to be in a neighborhood, I look to see what's happening in that neighborhood. Is there a lake association? What problems come with the lake association? What kind of governance is there? Is it low-lying area? Recently spoke with septic provider in our area, a very well-known one, Bernie Miller. Good conversation. In fact, we'll be inviting Bernie to our next hearing, our next meeting, excuse me. The environmental impacts of these things, do we fully know what they are? I do see that the county has proposed or established that you have to meter the flow on these properties. For years, I worked with the watershed district. I was on the shoreline review panel in this county. Heard a lot of interesting things, seen a lot of interesting things when it comes to development. I don't envy your jobs. Long story short, balance, again, is going to be the key. We're going to finish ours fairly quickly. We will be consulting with other townships to see how they're handling things, and then we'll move forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I was informed that Don Jensen will not be speaking, so I think there was some confusion on who signed up to speak at Public Access. Mary Lou Terway, do you plan on speaking? Okay, so after Mary Lou, we have Joel Cockelman? Yes? Okay.
All right, thank you.
So we have Mary Lou, and then Joe.
Good morning again. I'd like to state that I strongly oppose any IUP where the applicant has been in the past operating illegally. The ordinance is the law. Who here is above the law? Ignorance of the law is not a valid defense. Claims by the applicant of not knowing about the ordinance is disingenuous. They have other businesses and have had to go through other application processes for those. A reasonable person would know there are application processes involved in opening a vacation rental. In fact, the Verbo site specifically directs clients to investigate and pursue local rules and regulations. After being notified by the county, this property remained open for business without a permit and continues to operate illegally. Violating the law should not be rewarded by being given a permit, especially in this case, where the property is considerably unsuited for short-term use, including proximity to neighbors, and they have proven themselves to be incapable of respecting the neighborhood and public safety and shown blatant disregard for the ordinance. I am asking you to deny, deny this IUP. Further, I request that you enact a moratorium, so we can get this right from the get-go and not have to go through this public hearing again. The ordinance should be amended to protect the public's needs and rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe.
Mr. Chair, after Joel Cockelman, we have Russ Miller, and then Pat Thompson.
Okay, once again, this is Joel Cockelman from 1-857-9-LONG-LAKE-RODE-RICHMOND in Eden Township. An injustice is in the works, and you have the authority to correct it. While the Planning Committee voted to approve the IUP for Gregelko, long after a discussion, it does not seem right for these reasons. This property has been renting out unlicensed on many occasions over the past years. I do not understand the logic of the Planning and Zoning Committee that approved this IUP. What kind of a message does this send to anyone who intends to rent without a permit? They think if I get caught, the worst that will happen is I'll need to get a permit. Plus, it does a slam to the people that are operating a legitimate business. If you would take a closer look at this lot size, it's only 16,000 square feet, one-third of an acre. It's long and narrow with four buildings on it. For this reason alone, the permit should have been rejected. The patio is approximately six inches from the property line and less than 200 feet from the neighbor's bedroom, who, per letter, there are times where they have had to move to a different room to get sleep. Vacation rentals should not have a negative impact on the adjacent property's owner's health, safety, general well-being, or the environmental areas. Short-term rental vacations are non-supervised resorts in a residential neighborhood. Area resorts such as Island View, Riverside, Cozy Corners, Your Haven, all have onsite owners who live there onsite 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Russell Miller, 1-866-3-DERRYWOOD-RODE. I'm the next-door neighbor to the property in question directly to the north. First and foremost, I oppose this permit application, and I urge you to deny it. I've got varied reasons for my opposition. I've laid out in great detail as far as what those conditions or problems were, just to highlight and reiterate the top five, I guess, so to speak. We've had problems over the past year and a half now, since the business had been operating next door, most particularly traffic issues and parking issues, that we live on a private road, single lane, and it's all maintained by the neighborhood, Dairywood Road in essence. So we're the caretakers. We don't receive any township money, county money, to maintain this road, so it's up to us as a neighborhood to keep this road in repair and keep it plowed, which cooperatively, we've been able to do that. Another issue, again, is pets roaming loose when renters are present. We've had issues with litter after the fact, after the renters have left. Trespassing issues, as Joe had brought up just before me, the property is such a, the footprint is so small, that the real living space, as far as out front between the patio and the beach, is very constricted. So we're constantly trying to remind the neighbors, or the renters, rather, that, okay, property lines over here, please, you know, respect the property line and just stay within the footprint of the rented property. And lastly, it's the noise issue, which I'll go into a little bit more in depth. From a personal perspective, I've been retired for a number of years now. Did 30 years active duty, United States Air Force, and as with any career or any job, there are occupational hazards. Unfortunately, in the military, they get to be a little more severe. I'm not going to stand here in front of you and describe all my conditions, ailments, injuries, surgeries that have happened to me over the course of 30 years on active duty. But fortunately, my wife found a wonderful house in a wonderful neighborhood that's near a VA medical facility. So just in closing, I'm not, once again, I'm not going to talk about all my aches and pains, but I will bring up one in particular, and I have a great deal of trouble dealing with loud, sudden noises. And this happens frequently when the renters are next door on the patio, which, again, is just off the property line and within 15 feet of our bedroom. This is one thing that I go in on occasion to be seen for at the VA. And once again, I urge you to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Mr. Miller, I've got a question for you. In response to that private road, how is that private road defined? Is it an easement, or how is that on the properties?
That's a good question, Commissioner.
Or has it just been used for the last 50 years as a private road?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, it's a dedicated public road. It was dedicated on the plat. When the property was platted, it's just maintained privately, which is not uncommon in Stearns County.
Okay. Similar to like a low-maintenance road? Would you believe the same?
Road statute is different for low-maintenance roads.
Okay.
This is...
So the township has no obligation, yet it is public right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay. And is that right-of-way, does it accommodate emergency vehicles?
That would be up to the emergency vehicle, that would be up to the fire department to comment on that. I've driven out there, and I'm not, I can't testify to the facts of a fire truck coming through there. That would be up to them.
Mr. Lowen, can you answer that?
Yes.
Probably come up to the microphone, please.
The township does not maintain the road. That is correct. And it probably is a road that's been dedicated to public use. I'd have to go back and look at the plats on that. I can tell you this from some history. One of our former town supervisors, who was, I think he was chief of the fire department, actually inquired about removing some of the trees along that road. It's a single-track road. And with a new fire truck that's going to be purchased, I don't think it could get through there. It would have great difficulty. But that supervisor actually approached the residents to remove those trees, or one or two of them, and was turned down. So you've got that interesting dialogue going on now about emergency vehicles getting there. Well, you weren't concerned 20 years ago. Okay? And conditions change. But just some thought.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Persky.
That, those trees, do those trees exist in the right-of-way of that road?
You'd have to look at the plat. I would suggest that you come out to the property, if you haven't viewed it. Is this place properly suitable for this kind of development? Perhaps. It's narrow lot, it's a single-track road. You're going to drive on somebody's property if you meet someone. Okay. So getting back to that whole balance thing, you know, whose ox is getting gored? That seems to be part of the problem here. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, the next speaker is Pat Thompson, followed by Anthony Sagali.
Good morning, Pat Thompson. I have a home at 1-864-3 on the south side of the rental property. I understand that you guys are balancing between our private property rights and preserving our residential integrity against the economic benefits of having a vacation home, as well as the ability to run a small business. Had we known that the property didn't have a license last year, we would have turned them in and said, "They don't have a license." It's been a horrible experience for us as a family. We believe that the reason that it's there is that the county guidelines do not have a mechanism for enforcement or complaints. Our big concern is safety. There's more traffic, there's more boat activity. We have children. Some of the experience have been that the lot is tiny. It was part of a family lot that had three homes, and they divided it. So the property is 21 inches from our boathouse, the garage is 21 inches from the property line, and the actual home is less than five feet from the property line. So although they've done a great job of putting in arbivites, we hear everything, from topless women to urinating on our boathouse, to being on top of our boathouse, to sitting down to dinner and hearing people throw up. Now, if there was an enforcement mechanism, short of having to call the sheriff's department, we would look to that. But until that time, we are vehemently opposed to approving the permit. There just has to be some kind of mechanism, short of calling the property owner who lives an hour away, or calling the sheriff to resolve some of these things. So those are our thoughts on that. But we are opposed until the ordinances can be updated to protect us.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Anthony Sagali. I live three houses away on Dairywood Road to the north, and we've been there quite a long time. We are definitely opposed to the permit, and basically, the ordinance that was developed by Stearns County, that 439, many years ago, is good. And there are some things in there that are really advantageous. However, things are changing, and we'd like to have Stearns County look at that and address those issues. I've got eight points on this particular property. First, property's too small, and you've heard that, 60-foot. Some of the issue with having no access to the lake, someone brings a snowmobile or ATV to the lake, they can't even get to the lake without crossing private property. The recreational vehicles, there's just no place to put them. The parking is not adequate for trailers. You've got boat trailers, you've got other things that are there. It's just a spillover into the private road. There was some question about the private road here earlier. I'm not sure about that, but my property stakes go right across the property. So that, as far as I know, the property stakes on my property are on that road, so that road goes across my property. And my parents, actually, in 1948, dealt with the original seller, George Lesch, and he said that if there was a problem with driving across the back of everybody's lot, which it does today, that he would create a right-of-way. And there is a right-of-way, that if a road had to be built, there could be a road, but it's beyond the property. It does not involve this private road. So I think that just needs to be examined, but as far as I know, that is a private road, and it's not, it's only used by the residents. Number two, the Sacred Shores Lodge is advertised as a great reunion place for fishing, families, skiing, parties like bachelorette parties, which we've had. These parties or reunions are not supervised by property owners, and they are not on the site nor near the site. The neighbors need, they're the ones supervising this event. It's advertised as pet-friendly, but what does that mean, and what are the rules? Because pets are just left to run, and then we have to take care of the mess. Doesn't seem like, there may be rules, but they're certainly not enforced. Number four, safety is a major concern. Speeding, the neighbors have put together a speeding requirement on that road of 15 miles an hour. It's posted, as long as it's maintained, snow removal, it's a narrow road, and for the most part, everybody drives below that, or 10 miles an hour. It's really a slow traffic. That's not true for all. And even where some of the times the cars that are parked there on the vacation property make it really narrow, so you really have to go to different places to get through. And it's a visual problem. That's a windy road, small. And so you've got children, and if you've got cars speeding through, that doesn't work. The, there is no access to this VRBO except over a private road, which the neighbors, of course, maintain, and, you know, the applicant does not maintain it. To be clear, though, just, I'm not asking for them to maintain the road. I'm asking them to, for us, to maybe look at it differently and use it in a different manner. Not all guests are respectful of keeping the music or just noise, especially at night. Short-term rental is, they seem to be on vacation, they don't, sometimes they're very rude, that we're infringing on their rights. And Stearns County has made conforming lots a part of their proposal, so if there's new lots created, it needs to be 150-foot of lakeshore, 40,000 square foot. Now, a 60-foot lot and 16,000 feet is certainly non-conforming. I'm part of Main Terry Township, and as you know, they put an moratorium on them, and we're looking for the same moratorium, only to a point where we can come up, we, you, come up with what the rules should be. and we're looking for the same oratorium, only to a point where we can come up, we, you, come up with what the rules should be. And update it. The short-term rental environment is changing rapidly. Of course, as we know, that the VRBO market is now corporate, a lot of corporate ownership. We even have hotels and motels getting into that business, only because it's expanding their product line. So, it's a new corporate model, fine, but it doesn't really work in a residential area. And this growth wasn't seen three or four years ago, it's just explosive. What we're looking for is requires small, the small properties with no barriers to neighbors to not be acceptable to this type of activity. We need, if, if there is some guidelines on it, they need to be enforced. Right now, I don't know of that enforcement process. In fact, when I was at the planning meeting, they said they had not even heard of any complaints on this property. That was one of the reasons it was approved. I, I don't know, there was lots of complaints, but I'm not sure where they all went. The structures, to be rented, should follow guidelines on building codes and compliance. So if you're gonna rent something, it should be like a large, if I'm gonna rent my house, there's rules that I have to have on my house. Now, I know Stearns County ordinance has some, but it needs to be updated. Definitions of how people can accommodate or occupancy limitations, not to permit additional occupancy with tents, recreational vehicles, fish houses. I mean, people get quite creative. If the events are permitted, define limits that are allowed, define the rules for noise. So, you know, and I, I don't really wanna just repeat, 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 but we've had to live with this for a year and a half, and so we're not talking about the what ifs. And I've heard people come up and say, some of the VRBOs is marvelous. I've stayed, not at VRBOs, but Airbnbs, and my wife and I will stay there and interact. It's not an event, we're not going to a party. So, there's, there's a balance, and I think that's what you heard from Main Prairie also, there's a balance in doing this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to correct the record, Anthony Sagali is correct, it is a private road. I confirmed on the face of the plat from 1913. It is private, it is not public, so apologize for that. Next speaker is Joe DeRose, and after Joe is Jim DeRose.
Hi, do you want the address again?
Yes, please.
Joe DeRose, Riverside Resort, 21026 State Highway 22 in Richmond, Minnesota. I'll, I'll confess, I don't, I've never met Joseph and Kelsey, I've never been to their property. My endorsement of their application largely falls under the compliance issue that I sent to you guys, that while I praise, this county is highly robust and our ordinance is for short-term rentals. And so, these townships that are looking to increase and above and beyond that, that's completely fine if they want to do that, but they will, they will be very quickly one of some of the highest, most restrictive in the state if they choose to do so. So it's not that your process is faulty by any means, but we do have in this county one of the worst compliance rates for people that are of short-term rentals that are actually licensed. And I think I sent you guys an email on what Cook County and Otterdale County, how they rectified that. They have, so we have 21 licensed short-term rentals in our county, they have over 300, and they have a 95% compliance rate, where ours is down, estimated about 20%. So I think some of the complaints from these neighbors, it's not for the people, the 21 of us that have done it correctly. And when I say 21, I have three of those, so there's not that many operators in our, in our county. It's from the other people that, that just do it under the table, are doing it for not following the steps. And like I said, when they do go through the steps, it is a well-run operation, you guys run a tight ship. They go through, the, the planning commission went through and evaluated this properly, property properly. And then they motioned for an approval. So my concern is the precedent that this sets. Yes, they were renting it prior to being approved, take their word for it, if they knew it or not. Now they've, once they were notified, they've taken all the correct steps, they got the recommendation for approval, and now the risk is, what are the other 80% of, essentially 80 other people that are doing this now? What are they gonna see when they say, well, I'm doing it fine now, I'm making money now, why would I go to the county and get official license? So it's just, yes, the moratoriums are in place, and it buys us a little time, because you're not seeing the applications, but the issue isn't going away, all, all that the moratoriums have done really, is it's taken the only legal way to set up a, a short-term rental. They're still being set up. When 80% of our county currently doesn't seek county approval, moratorium's not gonna help. It buys you guys time to not have to sit through all these different applications, but I could go, any one of you could go on Airbnb and list your property in two hours. So, I want to just enforce, the plan you have is awesome, the plan you have is fantastic, and these townships, they can add to it if they want, but I don't really feel like that's necessary. But I do feel like it's necessary that we work on that compliance issue. I'd like to be, help with that area, I know there's a lot of different issues, or a lot of different options, and I really see that as really one of the easiest ways. You guys already have the plan in place, and it's really, it takes 30 seconds to hop on a site and figure out who's all listed in our county. It just takes, and if, if there's someone, if the county doesn't have the resources to do that, like I said, both Cook County and Otterdale County hired a third-party vendor, technology has made this compliance issue very simple. Yes, I'm sure those people charge money, that would be a taxpayer expense, but that's something that needs to happen if we... So that, that's where my support comes from for Joseph and Kelsey, they're trying to do it the right way, they were motioned for an approval. I would recommend that they get, you give it a shot, even if you reduce the terms from five or three years, whatever they're applying for. You guys have the right to take their license away if they're faulty applicants. Those third-party sites that I mentioned, I know that some of these people have issued concerns that they don't know where to go for complaints. Those third-party sites have a complaint department, all complaints go to them, that goes to the homeowner, and if the homeowner doesn't address it, then it goes to the county. So it's, it's kind of like a seamless run operation that both Cook County and Otterdale County are running. So while you guys were the first county, Stearns County was, and all the other counties looked to us for ordinances, now I think we need to start looking to other counties for compliance. But bringing some of those uncomplied properties under your umbrella is, is a step in the right direction. So that's where I support Joseph and Kelly's application.
Thank you.
Jim DeRose from Edgell Court, 20793. I do thank Stearns County again for 2008, when they did come up with that licensing process. And again, I was one of the first to have a vacation rental. And about two years, I mentioned the state was not interested, but then about two years later, they approached the resort association, and their concern was not the licensing as much as, we're not getting the taxes off these people that are renting. So they wanted to look at it. So I, I told them, go to Stearns County, I said, they've got, you know, they, they've got the process. And that was a long time ago, so I can see where, I'm not involved with that anymore, my son is, and he said the state is looking at it, so that's good. And I've heard a lot of comments today, and you can sympathize, in between segments here, I was thinking to myself, what if my neighbor decided to put in a vacation home rental? And I'd go walk over and talk to him and say, how are you gonna police this, and I want your cellphone, and things like that. But, again, we've had such good experiences and good people, and it's, again, it's run, you know, appropriately. I think, again, a big part of the issue is the ones that are not licensing and skirting the law. I'm glad I'm not on your side, having to sort all this out, but, and again, I do feel is a method to this, on how we, how we can resolve it, and have a good experience. Right after I got licensed, I had three neighbors call me, and they said, if it was anybody else, we would have opposed it, but they said, we know the way you run a resort, and we know it'll be done right. So they said, we didn't oppose it. So, again, maybe it comes down to, I don't know how you write the law that way, and I can see where the, where you have somebody from the Twin Cities owning one, and it's hard to police, but again, I'm glad I don't have to make that decision, but it would be nice if the owner was there to maintain it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next for speakers, Jim Hentges, Robin Hentges, and after those two, we have Krist Peters.
Jim Hentges, 31128 163rd Avenue in Collegeville Township, Haymont area. I'll make it short, I didn't expect to have, or get up here to talk twice, but I think the group of us that are licensed are very open and willing to help the county on anything that we can do. If somebody applies for a permit, if they can contact one of us that have done it for a while, that can give them some advice, and what we do, on our properties, we have exterior cameras with sound on them. We know what's going on outside of our properties all the time. And that's, I believe that's a big benefit. Other than that, it won't take any more of your time, just that we're, we're open to help with some of these issues.
Thank you.
Hi, Robin Hentges, 31128 163rd Avenue. The only thing I would really add is, I, I heard, you know, some of the complaints about the parties, and I wouldn't like that if that was my neighbor either. And so, it's very clear on the sites, we have place on VRBO and Airbnb, I can't speak for Evolve, where it says the rules of the vacation rental owner. And it's very clear in ours where it says, no parties, period, ever, in capital letters. On one property, we have a 200 or a $250 fine for an unauthorized gathering at our cabin. We have a $500 fine for that, it doesn't happen. So, you know, I'm not sure if that's the determination, where mostly we just have families and people wanting to get away, just like some of the other people we heard say they use them. You know, maybe that's it, not having, you know, gather, huge gatherings or groups or, you know, parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else yet, Angie?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Krist Peters. And then after Krist, we have Rodney Atkinson, and then we'll have the applicant, Joseph Gregelko.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me talk. I live on 18765 East Shore Drive, I am just adjacent up from there, which, that is where the road ends. And then Dairywood is two more places down the line. And my state runs out into the center of an approach that goes across the creek, which was made clear to the realtor when they sold them this place, that this was not their entryway into this place. They had to come in from Dairywood from the south. And many a times, when this gets rented out to different people, ATVs or whatever, just come flying up and down and have no respect. You tell them, this is a private road, you know, I leave it as a walkway, I want people to be able to go around the lake. And then one of the reasons this has never been developed to go all the way around is, that's what it would be, is if you make it a road, there is gonna be that much more traffic coming around. And we like to leave it as it is, not to have everybody coming around, which we call Sunday drivers. They all but guaranteed, when you get people renting, they don't care, because the cops have been called a few times. They come to our residence and ask, what's the problem? And I says, you know, right down the line, and then they're gone, or wherever they are, I don't know, they disappear, whatever, run to another spot, whatever. I, I, I really oppose this, because the lot is very small, and they do not respect that road, because they park on it and just tell you to go find your way around it, because it is, it is a narrow. So then that is where you get your trespassing on somebody else's property to get around it. That's basically all I need to say on that, but I really oppose this place.
Good, thank you.
Rodney Atkinson, 310A Street, Southeast Freeport. And my wife and her brothers and sisters have a place a few down from there. They just wanted to make sure they were on the record as opposing it. You know, I think we've seen here where the concept is not bad, and the Hentges, for example, they're people that are doing a spectacular job, but somehow this one kind of fell through the cracks to get this far, and it just ain't the right place. You know, people that, that are in R1 have certain expectations, especially people that have been there for a very, very long time. And, their expectations get changed by government changing the rules of what can happen. And yet, some of those people just aren't gonna get up the next day when you make a new ordinance and be happy about it and embrace it. So, the R1's R1, I think rental is some different zoning, and somehow if you can make it work better, or screen these here kind of places out before they get this far, would be my advice. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's the next?
Mr. Chair, the applicant, Joseph Gregelko, is our last, our last-listed speaker, assuming he wants to address the board.
Good morning, my name is Joe Gregelko. My wife and I, Kelsey, own 18653 Dairywood Road. Just wanna give you a little personal background, I'm a business owner, started my own business, I have over 45 employees. I got two young children under four. I, we purchased this, we were looking for a property, especially a cabin, having both had family cabins as children, so we wanted a cabin, and we just couldn't find anything close enough, because I work pretty much seven days a week, especially from now till freeze up. So we needed something close, this property came up in 2020, and we jumped on the opportunity. Our goal was never to create a giant cash-flowing property, or rental at all, it never really crossed our mind, but having owned this property and having such a great time up there, we were getting asked by friends, family, and things like that, that if we would ever rent it. So, this is our only property that we own that's a rental. I have 300 acres in Loretto, Minnesota, which I run as a tree nursery, so we have over 40,000 trees in production, and I have neighbors all around me, and we get along great. I understand these concerns, in fact, I'm learning as I'm sitting here. We've since, having started this, we, we did operate without a license, I'm not denying that, and, and we just done, we'd never done it before. Is it an excuse? I don't think so either, but we're not dumb people. Once we got notified that we were uncompliant, we stopped all rental, we are not renting right now. And we've been through the permitting process. So, not everyone can afford a lake place. And, and I'll give you a couple examples. During the winter, when we closed up, I coached high school wrestling at St. Michael Albertville, and I'll bring kids up there, whether they're athletes or need a break from the wrestling's perspective, and in fact, we did win the state championship this year, so that was pretty cool. But, I'll bring them up there, and their families will ask, which I don't know them, so they're not family and friends, is, hey, can we rent your cabin, my son had such a good time up there fishing at Pearl Lake with you guys? And I said, I believe so, if we get through the permitting, now we have to delete that right now, so... There's hundreds of vacation rentals listed in Stearns County. This gentleman, like this gentleman said, you just Google it, they're all over the place, and very few have permits. You know, I'm not, we're not trying to rent it right now, we're not, we just wanna get through the right avenue, get the right permits. And I would encourage, and we're, we're doing a much better job now, having heard voices, concerns, is narrowing no parties, great, great, no parties, only, I would say, people we know renting it. Because the last thing we wanna do is take this awesome cabin, which my two little kids are just fish, that we love to go up there and swim at, and no people are abusing it. And the last thing I wanna do is have neighbors unsatisfied and all that. But, I will say that there sounds like a lot of rules for thee, but not for me going on here. When I'm up at Fourth of July, there's campers everywhere, we're using it- We're using it personally, and there's partying. A lot of weekends, I, I get out after the kids go to bed and go fishing on the lake, and it's loud, there's music in a lot of residents' homes. So, you know, rules for thee, but not for me on this deal. Trash, we gotta, you know, I'm, we have to buckle down on that as, as a renting owner. But again, I don't want to make this a, a rental property. I want other people to enjoy it while we can't, you know? So I want to use it as much as we can, but I'm not available six days of the week. So we, we just can't make it up there. So let these people enjoy it. I, I have my cards here. I would encourage people to call me on my cell phone here. And I, this is the, many times, the first time I've heard of a complaint from anybody. And if there's cars parked in your way, let's move them. If there's, if there's too much noise, this, I would, I would love to put the cameras up there and hammer down on that. But hopefully going forward, there are no renters like that. Because I sure wouldn't appreciate it either. As far as trash and stuff like that, I, I, I think, you know, residents could look internally here. I, we, I do go out on the ice, ice fishing, and it's, it's a, it's a dump hole out there after a lot of these residents enjoy, bring up their, maybe family or friends, and they leave the house. And, I mean, it's more trash than a Fourth of July party out there. Where do you think that stuff ends up? It's in the lake, you know? And so I would just encourage everybody to call my number. We're not renting it right now, or have we been since the moratorium? March, it was approved. Moratorium instated, and now we're here. We're just trying to go through the right avenue. As far as cars parked on the, on the private road, we need to limit them. Maybe there only should be two cars. But I'm, I'm more than willing to put that in, in the description and work with neighbors on screening and fencing. And that's part of our requirement to get licensed would be to do that. So not trying to make enemies or anything here. In fact, I, I would just like to see people enjoy the property and have a weekend escape that otherwise maybe couldn't afford a weekend like that. So if there's any questions, I encourage people not to send it directly to the board right now. I bet I could answer it, or we could work it out. Like I said, I have a lot of property down in Loretto, Minnesota. And I tell you what, I typically don't ask the, the city to handle it. I usually just walk over and talk to my neighbor, and we usually come to applicable agreement. So I would say, if anyone has any questions, take a card, and I'm available 24 hours a day, and I appreciate everyone's time today. But I approve, I hope you guys approve us for a license, and, and we can work together to get it right and, and get this solved. But I appreciate everyone's time today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no more speakers listed unless someone else has changed their mind.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Teresa Branster, 21067 Elbeau Circle. I appreciate hearing from the DeRoses, since they're on the other side of the issue. However, I would just like to bring up one other issue that was not addressed tonight, and it's the affordable housing. And that is an area that these vacation rentals also affect. They increase the property value of the homes around us. We've got several homes around us now that are listed higher than they would normally have been listed, and they're probably going to sell for that because people are looking to turn them into vacation home rentals, which increases the affordable housing on the lakes. And if it continues to go as this industry goes, the whole chain of lakes that I live on will probably be all, all vacation rentals because there's residents that do not want to live next door to them. You've got the good managers, and then you've got the managers that cause problems. And so that's what we're dealing with. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Anyone else that wishes to speak? Third call. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Okay, commissioners, so given the recommended action, we've done number one. So we've done conducting the public hearing, and I think number two can be, your discussion would be discuss the planning commission findings or have your own dialogue. And then again, we just need to decide if you're going to approve, deny, or table the request. I do have some photos, if you'd like. I'm going to ask the control room, I talked to Janet yesterday, to show PDF page 106, please. So just give you a little bit of a visual, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, what the applicants are proposing for their vegetative planting. In addition, I did visit the site yesterday morning and took a couple pictures, which are on packet page, I'm sorry, not packet page, PDF page 103, 109. So again, that's going to differ from your packet page in the control room. This is going to be the PDF that I sent yesterday. So we're not looking at the correct photo. I'm not sure how to resolve that issue. But what I do have, Mr. Chair, is a, a view from in between Mr. Miller and Gregelko's property, showing where there could potentially be a privacy fence in addition to the arborvitae that's proposed in the application. I did speak briefly with Mr. Miller ahead of the meeting, and he said he would not support a privacy fence due to some concerns with snow. So we will, we will just have you refer to your own packets, of which are different than my pages because I added some pictures. So again, the, the next item for discussion would be, if you're looking to approve the interim use, there are nine conditions that are proposed, including, I'm not going to read them all, but one of them.
Angie, actually, could you read those conditions? I, I mean, hold on.
I can summarize?
Yes.
Okay. So first condition is that the board set a date or an event on which the interim use permit would expire. The proposal, based on your previous decisions for vacation home rentals, is three years. And again, that three years, for the next year or until Main Prairie Township would make a decision, would not, would count against their three years. Number two, the maximum occupancy and advertising is nine people. They are required to obtain a lodging license. Condition number four relates to flow measurement device for the septic. Condition number five is that they're required to keep a report detailing the use of the home by all of the guests. Number six, that a ring buoy is required. Number seven, that all local zoning requirements must be complied with prior to licensure. Again, that's the township moratorium. Number eight, a survey showing, a certificate of survey, so not just a site plan, but they would need to hire a surveyor to show us three 9x20 parking spots located outside of that private road. And number nine, the garbage shall be avail, the garage, rather, shall be available for parking unless they are able to show a survey with three outside parking spots. So those are the, the, the conditions discussed at the planning commission. If you have any questions, I will pause and let you have your discussion.
If this is turned down, Angie, could they come back and apply later, once they have taken care of these conditions? Would that work or not?
Mr. Chair, so the ordinance requires a year in between application. The one, yes, it would be, it would be one year for reapplication.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Angie and all of you who have spoken today, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and knowing this is a pretty, it can be pretty emotional, and it is, it is where you live. It's where people are also trying to come up with other ways of permitting people to enjoy the lake. I think we've done some good things with regard to ordinance. I know a lot of people are talking about the ordinance as opposed to applying the current ordinance to this property. I think we all know that there's some modifications at a minimum we want to be looking at. For this one, and maybe it stems off of what you were just asking, Mr. Chair, given Munson is in the process, they have a moratorium, and they're in the process of working this through. And we've got a number, there's a number of challenges with the size of this lot, where a number of things are placed. And it, it does reinforce for me the importance of people talking to each other, which is not something we can really require in an ordinance. It's just so important that people do talk to each other and try to work things through. I am wondering about denying this for now based on the Munson, excuse me, on the township.
Main Prairie Township.
Main Prairie, I just said the wrong one came out of my mouth. We've got people from a number of different places talking today. Denying it with the applicant coming back, should the, the moratorium be lifted and they, they show that they're meeting the township requirements? Because we're going to want them to meet the township requirements. I'm not sure I have fully that in the right frame, but it does seem at this point that at a bare minimum, it will not have an impact of moving forward for the, the, the people requesting the permit because of the moratorium and then are saying that they would need to follow what the township puts in place. So there's a lot of uncertainty right now. I mean, to me, there's a lot of uncertainty for this particular, and so that's a question I have. That's not in a form of emotion. But I'm wondering about, maybe it's a slightly different thing than Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mergan was asking.
Mr. Chair, sorry about that. Commissioner Clark, so, yes, I mean, the, the board has within their decision-making ability to approve it, deny it, or table it. So would not suggest that you table it in order for the moratorium to expire. I don't think that time's going to work out. So if one of your findings to denying would be that the township has a moratorium and you would like this use to comply with any subsequent rules that the township comes up with, that would be, that could be your finding of fact for, for today. What I would say, Mr. Chair and commissioners, is that, for example, if Main Prairie Township finishes their moratorium in, let's say, September, that could be an option then, or a change in circumstances and allow the Gregelkos to reapply at that time. I hesitated on saying that earlier, but I did hear from Dennis Lowen that they are trying to hurry this through, or not hurry it through, but trying to keep it on track. So yes, they could apply sooner than a year, once the township moratorium expires. I do believe that would be a change in circumstance. And the ordinance would allow reapplication.
Okay, thank you, Angie. Any other discussion? Any other? Commissioner Luntzweier?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Coach on a great season. We've, on this panel, we have two recovering wrestlers, high school wrestlers in your presence. And at least in my case, I can say the experience didn't have any negative, any negative, any negative impact on me whatsoever. The, a couple of observations here. The, this is not an unusual situation in this regard. The access road was platted 110 years ago. And a lot of the initially settled lake properties in Stearns County have this problem of inadequate access. That isn't a, a situation for folks using the property in a manner that vacationers would. It gets to be a bigger deal when you consider that the township, in this case, is expected to provide fire protection. The, there's the expectation of ambulance service when it's needed. And then, of course, law enforcement. And it sounds like, well, doesn't sound like, you're just looking at the pictures, for more intensive uses, the unanticipated need for an improved access is going to be a tough standard to meet. But, and the good, and hopefully, it wouldn't be needed, but emergency vehicle access for these property, for these lakes, the most popular lakes were the ones that were initially settled way back when. And so this isn't unusual. The issues that, in my particular case, then turn on access, which, and, and the related issue of parking, which is a big deal for me, lot size. There is a way that if we were starting with a clean slate, we would have a different lot size to anticipate this traffic in a different manner. I'm encouraged to hear the testimony of, from the township. They're certainly aware of the challenges that these types of property users face. The access also does create an issue regarding liability, although I haven't seen any cases going forward on this where the inadequate access has resulted in a issue along those lines, at least in Stearns County. I would be interested to ask the county attorney if there's any examples of that in other parts of the state. Yeah, my, my issue is the access, lot size, for this type of use, if I'm gonna, well, heck, if I'm gonna rent a place like this for a week or two, damn right, I'm inviting my friends. The, and that calls for more intensive uses. It was kind of interesting to hear about the issue of a tree removal to improve the access. I've never thought about it before, but who has jurisdiction, whose permission is needed for the access that currently exists? Whose permission do you need for tree removal, if indeed the tree is in the right of way? I guess it would come down to the interpretation of who would own that right of way. I am encouraged to hear Joe talk about, well, if we need cameras for security, liability, et cetera, et cetera, there's a willingness to do that. But, and I'm also encouraged by, by hearing from the township that they have a, a realization that these are challenges for property users in the area, and they're willing, just like we are, to take on responsibility for making this a better situation. If only we can figure out how we could do that. But we'll have to come up with some more, better ways eventually, because this isn't unique to Pearl Lake or this particular property. Going into this, I, I'm also have some experience with rental properties, and it's tough going into this to anticipate every possible outcome. into this to anticipate every possible outcome or every possible challenge when you take these properties on. So I appreciate the owner's dilemma. In this particular situation, I'm encouraged to hear that if this is denied, at some point in the future, the applicant can reapply. Maybe we'll have some answers, maybe we won't, but this doesn't close the door. If we vote against this, it closes the door for now. And maybe some of these things can be worked out, maybe they can't. Maybe this isn't the right time, right place, right property. I don't know. I'm not, I'm no longer in the real estate business. Thank God, this isn't my problem. So in this particular case, since the window of opportunity to reapply in somewhat near future comes up again, if Joe hasn't been sufficiently traumatized by our process of doing this, he has the opportunity to re, to come back at this. I'm encouraged by that. For the near term, I'll be voting against the application. Good luck, though. I hope, I hope something, I hope something works out for you.
Anyone else, or are we ready for a motion?
Mike, I'm willing to make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I've got a, just, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, thank you for citing the issues about the right of way in the road. I think that's something that needs to be resolved. I would think we would be negligent should we have an experience where there's a tragedy down there and we didn't make possibility to make sure those emergency vehicles would be able to get there. So I would encourage the property owners, if it's a private road, somehow to come together on acceptable way to make sure that that road is safe for emergency vehicles. Otherwise, I don't know what our procedure would be. Also, as far as relating to the wrestlers, I was not aware Commissioner Clark had wrestled in school, but I found that rather surprising.
Oh, she's tough. That might be a smiley face, but she's tough.
That I know. And I have some of the similar sentiments that you have. Again, I appreciate everyone's testimony. I can appreciate everyone's passion as well. But I also want to say, this board here too, I appreciate everyone sitting here and listening because this is also how democracy works. You may not always agree with it, but we let the process carry out. And this is not a black and white situation. It's a lot of gray. And we're just seeing, is it gray, or is it white, or is it black? It's difficult for us sometimes to make these decisions. But, and I would have echoed some of the other comments by Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Commissioner Clark, and I too would be in opposition at this time to support this, you know. So Angie, I'm going to ask, would you like a negative motion or a positive motion?
I was going to make a motion.
Does it make, yeah, but does it make a difference whether we do it in the affirmative or in the negative?
No, it doesn't. She said no.
Mr. Chair, the intent of the board is to deny the application. That typically would be your, your motion would be to deny.
So, Mr. Chair, just to clear things up, I'm the oldest of four kids. I have three younger brothers, my brother close in age to me, and I used to wrestle to solve our disagreements until that unfortunate time that most women face where their brothers get taller than them. And then we found other means, going back to your point, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Before I make the motion, again, do want to reinforce a lot of the things that you just said, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, and they aren't unique to either vacation rentals or these particular kinds of roads. So they continue to be challenges and neighbors coming together to figure that out, all kinds of neighbors, whether they're owning a resort or a vacation rental or anything else. They're kind of that obligation to each other. Based on everything we heard, the motion I'm going to make, and somebody may choose to request modifying it, is that we deny the permit at this point, recognizing that the applicant can reapply after Munson Township. It would be a change of circumstances.
Main Prairie.
Main Prairie, goodness gracious. All of you with Munson. I just want to say, you've got Munson on my mind right now. Once the Main Prairie Township, and of course, I know where Pearl Lake is, so I apologize, that should they lift the moratorium, that the applicant, when they come back, would be following the, what Main Prairie has put in place, you know, before they come. Because that is one of the challenges we have right now, right? Is that we've, we know that different communities are looking at how they together want to be balancing all of these needs. But if somebody isn't looking at any of that and comes back to us, we're going to tell them they gotta go ahead and be respecting that. So I think that, that, there are a number of issues that we need to be addressed. It appears to me at least that the township is looking at those things.
To put the right of way matter in perspective, the, the access was platted, the road was platted in 1913, 100, almost 110 years ago. It does point out the decisions that we make occasionally have incredibly long-term impact. So 110 years from now would be the year 2132. I hope, you know, my fondest hope for myself, even though I won't be here, is that they don't look back at the record and go, boy, that Lenzmeyer, he must have been duller than hell, you know? But anyway, well, I'm gonna move to deny the request, otherwise, you know.
Lee, are you seconding my motion then? Are you seconding my motion then?
Commissioner Clark already moved it.
Okay.
So you're seconding?
Yeah, I'll second it. And let's move this process on.
Is there any other discussion? They moved and seconded to deny.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, six and five is saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And if we could have the record reflect that Commissioner Lenzmeyer will never be perceived as having been dull.
Another opportunity to make friends, you know?
I think that we are going to take another break at this point.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Thank you.
We're up to item F, which is another public hearing.
Yeah, another opportunity to make friends.
And we have Angie Berg here to give us an overview before we open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In front of you today are some real subtle slight modifications to the land use and zoning ordinance, except for one, which we'll all explain in more detail. So the county board set a public hearing on March 22nd. This was recommended by the Stearns County Planning Commission and also sent to, as required by law, all townships and cities. Today, you're considering a public hearing to amend the land use and zoning ordinance for some clarification on definitions of impervious solid waste transfer, solid waste transfer station, related to conditional use permits and variances. We're proposing to modify that a little bit so you automatically get two years for establishing your use or using your variance. Currently, it's one year, and then you need to ask for an extension. And in this day and age, construction projects are just taking longer. And so we're proposing just to give everybody two years from the get-go. The next and probably the most significant change is related to certificate of surveys and stakings. Not to get too sentimental here, but when I first started at the county years ago, Denny Crone said, "Why aren't you guys requiring surveys for permits when you're issuing construction permits?" And the answer is, "Well, it costs money for the landowner." And their answer is, "Yes, it definitely does." But twenty-seven years later, I'm here telling you that I think it's time that you consider this requirement. And this requirement basically says when you're applying for a construction site permit, not a feedlot permit, just a construction site permit, and if you're proposing to build something that is less than one and a half times the required setback, so for example, if it's a ten-foot setback and you're going to be fifteen, you'd need a survey. The reason is, we are seeing less and less property owners knowing where their actual surveyed boundary is. We issue permits based on the owner's identification of said property lines, and it's causing a lot of problems for neighbors. It's causing problems for future applications when the landowner comes in. Yes, it is an expense, and it's also an investment in the property. It is going to significantly assist properties or permits rather even to go forward quicker. I'm not saying that if you have a survey, you're going to get a permit faster, but it's definitely going to help the county get a good picture of what is on your property and what you're proposing to do. So that is proposed change to section four point eleven point four.
Yeah. Angie, and with that, does that deal with existing pins? So if I know where the pins are on my property, they're exposed, do I still need to have the survey, or is that just to locate the pins?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, it's both. So you would actually, let's say you're proposing to build a new home, and you know your, you know, or you think you know where your property pins are, right? The requirement is that you hire a surveyor to come out and stake where your home is going to be built, or your shed is going to be built. So the surveyor would actually stake where the proposed building is, and then staff can go out and we can measure to make sure that you're going to meet the requirement from the side property line. Typically, it's side property line. So yes, it's both. Even though you know where it is, we're asking that the board consider making it a requirement, that they submit a paper document from a licensed surveyor showing that it can meet all of the setbacks.
Okay, then what about putting in, let's say, no, two years later, I want to put a shed in, and I know it's where it's going to go, and it's going to be, it's going to prove the setback, and you would say it'd be one and a half times that distance. Would I still have to have a surveyor come in and look at those pins?
They would need to add that, that building to the drawing, correct? I did discuss this with multiple land surveyors. They did help come up with what would be the policy, and the policy's a few pages long, just in order to show exactly what they would all have to show on the survey, highly technical in nature, so it's not in the ordinance. If there's no other questions on that, I'll, I'll move on and finish.
Well, I guess I would have a concern about that. In just talking to an individual this past week, they're going to find the pins on their property. And I says, "What does it cost to find the pins?" And they said about $1,000. Okay, so my question would be, are you going to then have, if I'm building a shed, am I going to have to have a surveyor come out and actually do a survey on my property in order for me to put that shed out there? That's what it sounds like this proposal would be.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, if you're proposing to build that structure less than one and a half times from, from the property line, I will add, and obviously, I'm sounding very, like I'm advocating for this because I am, but Sherburne and Wright County, for example, they require a certificate of survey on any building on any parcel less than five acres in size. I do think that that's a bit excessive, because the whole intent is to make sure you're going to meet the setback. If you're 300 feet from your property line, I don't, and if you end up being 280, it's not a big deal when you only need to be 10.
Correct.
So, so yes, I'm not going to tell you that your example would not be required. It would be required to have a survey. We're, we're seeing the, the cost of building go up, and I understand that the cost of getting a permit then, in theory, would go up. But again, it's an investment, and some of the building projects that we're seeing come through are, you know, million or plus dollars. And a certificate of survey is really a minor cost related to what we're seeing on a lot of these projects.
In defense of what Angie is recommending here, I personally know of a property where, when it got surveyed, they're finding out the neighbor's shed is partially onto their property.
Mr. Chair, I'm aware of several situations that are similar to that as well. And I was thinking about the expense and, from both owners, really knowing where that is so that you are able to deal with potential challenges is important.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and I, and I agree with that. But I'm just saying, when you've got exposed pins, when you, if you've just had the property surveyed, and now you come back, and now you're going to have to have it surveyed again while they have exposed pins, it just seems a little bit excessive.
Doesn't it, maybe I'm Mr. Chair, reading this wrong, but if I just had it done, I'd have a certificate, and I can bring that in. I wouldn't have to go do it again.
But for the new, for the new building, would you have to?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the, the survey wouldn't, would have to be updated, right? So, so you'd bring in the survey that you had done to a local surveyor, probably the one who did it before, and you would say, "I'm proposing now to add this shed." So the surveyor would add the shed to the drawing, and then the surveyor would go out, and they would stake the building. They would put the hub stakes in. So then, again, we can go out and we can make sure. And, and sometimes things shift after we go out there. And so again, when a licensed surveyor sets the hubs on the ground for where they're proposing to build, they cannot move them. And, and after we, you know, when, when the builder then starts. So it's assurance that all of that happens before we issue the permit.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, for standards for issuing an IUP, this is a slight modification related to interim use permits can be reevaluated by the commissioners if there's a change in ownership. And we are proposing that it be modified to state that unless at least one person or entity is the same full or partial owner as the previous owner. So for example, if husband and wife buy a property in, as tenants in common in their, in their own personal names, and then a year, and they get an interim use permit, let's say, to mine their property, a year later, they want to put that into an LLC, but they're still the full or partial owner of that LLC, that would not require a change to the interim use. The last changes are really updating, there's a change to the solar related to DNR notification of a natural heritage site. So the intentions here were good. We were going to be asking DNR for comments on all solar sites, and they do not have the staff to comment. We've, we've been holding up some solar projects for six to nine months, and that is really causing concern from, from not only the solar developer to our office trying to manage the permit for that long. So we're proposing, as recommended by the Planning Commission, it'll be forwarded to the DNR. It's incumbent upon them to decide if they can react or not. A minor change to enclosure, enclosure of outdoor storage areas, a change related to lot standards for permeable paver. Instead of annually having to certify your permeable surface as permeable, we're changing that to five years. So with that, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I don't have any written comments on this public hearing. However, I do know that there's a member of Avon Township Planning Commission who I believe wants to speak. So unless there's any questions, I'll step back. Oh, and so Ms. Lori, your check from Avon Township Planning Commission was here. Shaleen, I did chat with her ahead of the meeting, and she primarily was concerned that this survey requirement was going to apply to farms or feedlots, and the answer is, it's not. It's not in that part of the ordinance. We're not adding that requirement. Lori also echoed a bit of what Commissioner Persky said about, you know, so you're going to make someone who had, you know, whose property was planted 50 years ago, get a survey done to show where their lines are. Yes, that is what we're proposing.
At what, at what point is this to be required?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, the survey requirement. So if you're proposing to build something, shed, house, closer to the property line than one and a half times, you're required to submit a survey to our office. That's the proposal.
My, my point is, is, you know, the, well, my point, I don't know if I'm making a point, the thought process is, is that depending upon how we structure the requirement, if this could be timed at, to take effect at the same time that a property is transferred, and since so many transfers involve a loan, a mortgage, or whatever, you could roll that extra cost, because there will be extra cost, into the loan proceeds, it would be relatively painless. I appreciate the need to, for more clarification and more sophistication to our process, because we have many more physical instruments for making these property measurements more accurate. I mean, including stuff that doesn't come to mind usually, like satellites. The, I, I don't know, I don't have a suggestion in terms of when to, when this would become effective, or how to structure the timing on it. Yeah, the point is, is that the idea definitely has merit, and I think it's what, what will generate the least objection is the timing.
Anything else before we open the public hearing? Anything else? All right, I think we'll open the public. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Third call, anyone here to speak in this public hearing? Seeing no one, we're going to close the public hearing. Okay, Angie, could you guide us in a little bit?
Mr. Chair, so again, in front of you are some proposed changes. If, if approved, they would be enacted today. I think to, I'll try to answer Commissioner Lenzmeyer's question or concern another way. So the trigger would be when you want to build something. You have to do the survey. I, I understand what you're saying for new construction with a loan and the title company, it would, you know, wrap it in. Yeah, I'm not, I'd have to think about that in terms of, we don't always know, at the time of closing, they don't always know what they're going to build. So we won't, they won't always know how to identify that. But we do work with a lot of the same title companies, surveying companies, mortgage companies. We can definitely share this requirement with them and explain to them what it means for, for their clients.
I don't want to hold up the show for this consideration, but yeah, when you get the opportunity to have that chat with folks.
For sure.
Have that, that'd be good follow-up. And if at some point in the future, we have to change this, so be it. The, just because we're looking out for the greater common good, doesn't mean our actions will be appreciated. That's not new, though.
I'll definitely reach out to our, our real estate land professionals. They're all very good to work with, and we'll, we'll communicate with them.
Mr. Chair, I guess going back to both that question and the one that Commissioner Persky had, right now, as I'm reading it, it is silent on the timing of the certificate? So, a few questions I, I mean, besides, do we just leave it this way? Should somebody at the time of the transfer of property have a survey, a certified survey done? Could that be accepted? And then also, if somebody had done it, had a survey, a certificate of survey within X period of time, could that be accepted, just so they're not having to go do it again?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Clark, yes, the answer is the survey part, we would absolutely accept that. The difference is the staking.
Right, because you want to make, I'm sorry. So if I'm hearing you right, you want to make sure somebody didn't move the stakes.
Right. So they would, again, when staff, when environmental services staff goes out to make sure all the ordinance requirements are being met, the property lines would be surveyed and marked by a land, land surveyor, and then the proposed building would be staked out, and the hubs would be shown, so we can ensure that they're meeting all the setbacks.
Thank you for helping me understand that part. Thanks.
Mr. Chair. Again, my, my concern is just an unnecessary financial burden. Just another scenario. For example, if you've got a, a home that's on the property, it's been surveyed, you know where it is on the property. Now I want to add my deck. Am I going to have to have that surveyed, even if I know that my setback on my house, okay, is, exceeds the requirement, okay? Will I have to have that surveyed then?
Mr. Chair, the answer is yes. And we would continue to, and what we do now is, we do talk to property owners when they come in and ask, "What construction projects do you have planned in the next two years?" And so we try to have them plan out the things that they might want to do, and then add that to their permit at that time, get permitted for what they think they're going to add. So yes, that is true.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I mean, I certainly share your concern, and, it really is not a but, it's an and, thinking even about what we were hearing today. There are real questions at times between neighbors, when you're, when you keep hearing, when we keep hearing five feet from the property line, 20 inches from the property line, all those other things. It, it seems like this is a tool also to maybe bring clarity to the neighbors so that you don't end up having increased disputes. And, and let's face it, some of the properties we've been hearing about very recently, we would not, they would not have been able to build things the way they, they were able to at one point.
Any further discussion? Otherwise, we'll be looking for a motion on this.
Do you want to?
No.
Okay. I, I move to approve the ordinance, the ordinance amendments.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just one more question, Mr. Chair. And Angie, on the solar gardens, we're going to inform the DNR about the solar garden, that's correct. And are we waiting for them to get a response as far as them going, going ahead, or are we going to get any recognition that, yes, they did receive the notification? How is there going to be, is there going to be any type of checkup, knowing that they got that, or how would that, is that going to work?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, as proposed, we would send them notification, and it would be incumbent upon the DNR to tell us if there's any concerns. What I've learned from the DNR in the last couple of years on solar is that they're really trying to wrap their arms around utility scale solar at this point. You know, some of these 20, 50, 100 megawatt systems such as being proposed in Sherburne County, and that is what they're trying to wrap their arms around, are those sorts of projects that are hundreds of acres, thousands of acres. These little small, three to five acre parts, solar farms are not making it to the top of their list. So we would notify them, we would issue the permit per the normal process, and we would move on.
And, and my question isn't regards to them coming out and making a site visit, it's just that they're aware of that, and they know that they've been made aware of that, because there may be a few unique situations that would be concerning.
And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, we'll reach out to the manager of the Natural Heritage Information System site, and let them know at the DNR that we are having this change, and here's what we're, we mean by it, so they understand that we've had a change.
Michelle, answer.
Randy, is this, survey requirements issue ever come up with recorders, auditors, that type of thing? I would see where they would, I, I can imagine where they would have an interest in that.
Well, I think property lines are always an issue, but I think property is still getting recorded and transferred, but there's issues between landowners at times.
Okay, let the attorneys figure it out. Oh, great.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll look for a vote here. It's been moved and seconded, recommended action. All in favor, signify with aye.
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 Proposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to recess the regular county board meeting in order to conduct the human services board meeting. And Melissa Huberty, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Melissa Huberty, I'm the Human Services Administrator, and there are two items on the Human Services Consent Agenda. First one is G1 on page 242, and that's the revised bylaws for the Human Services Advisory Committee, as well as the Community Corrections Advisory Board. You may recall that last October, the board adopted Resolution 21-74, and that made significant changes to the composition of the membership of all boards that are appointed in committees, and this just puts us in compliance with those. And then the second item is G2, and is on page 254, and it's claims spent on behalf of human services clients. And I'm available for questions.
Anyone have any questions for Melissa? If not, we'll look for a motion.
I'd move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And there's one item on the Human Services Regular Board Agenda, and it's item H1 on page 256. We are asking the board to recognize May 6th as Child Care Provider Appreciation Day in Stearns County, and I have with me for some brief comments, Nick Henderson, who is our Family and Children's Services Director. And then with the board's permission, after he's done, I'd like to just quickly read the proclamation for the childcare providers who I know are listening in today. With that, Nick.
Thank you, Melissa. Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Nick Henderson, Human Services Director, Family and Children's Division. We are here this morning to offer a proclamation recognizing the childcare professionals of Stearns County. Stearns County currently has approximately 300 licensed childcare providers. Affordable quality childcare is important to Minnesota families. Childcare providers are a critical component of the state and the nation's economic infrastructure. They ensure that children are, have a safe place to learn, grow, while parents work. This day is observed in order to appreciate and show our support for the people who work as childcare professionals. They make it easier for society by managing tasks and are always available when we need them. This day focuses on building awareness for the hardships faced by childcare workers who look after our children when their parents are busy working and attending to daily needs. Their hard work and support shall not be considered as only a small contribution to society. There are many parents in society who cannot afford to provide the required care to their children on a regular basis. This is where childcare professionals come in. They take the role as almost a second parent and nurture the kids while their parents are away. Their contributions to society certainly deserve an honorable mention. People must be aware of their daily services, from nurturing to caring, and they function as a building block, function as building blocks since childhood. On this day, there is a huge rise in the demand for daycare services, since they are only getting busier by the day and have way less time to spend with their families. Hence, it is necessary for us to take time today and to show our support for the daycare providers. To all the childcare professionals of Stearns County, thank you for your commitment to ensuring the health, well-being, and success of our children. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Melissa.
All right, thank you, Nick. So we're asking that you sign the proclamation, and it states this, "Whereas, the day is observed to appreciate and show our support for childcare providers who dedicate their lives to the well-being of children. This day especially focuses on building awareness for the hardships faced by childcare workers who look after children, over half of whom are under age six nationwide. Their hard work and support is a building block of our state economy. The COVID-19 pandemic created tremendous hardships for the childcare providers and families of Stearns County who depend on them. They have continued to meet the needs of families while risking their health and financial stability to remain open. There are many parents in society who cannot afford to provide the required childcare to their children on a regular basis," to their children on a regular basis, and these providers support, support those children, provide critical enrichment opportunities, and nurture development for children from all backgrounds. There is a huge rise in the demand for daycare services and increasing pressures on those who choose this career path. Childcare provider's contribution to society is immense and deserves recognition for the activities they provide every day for the children in our community. And finally, our future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today. Support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. So, I would ask the Board to resolve that Stearns County hereby proclaims May 6th, 2022, as Child Care Provider Appreciation Day in Stearns County, and urges all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions of Melissa? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion.
It's moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed. Motion carries, congratulations.
All right, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I know we're, we're way behind, so we want to keep moving, but thank you for reinforcing all, the importance of, of all the people who are doing this, and the challenges it's been. Parents really entrust.
Yes.
Them with the most precious part of who they are, and it's been really hard, you know, I think, Commissioner Mergan, about, you know, your wife's work, life's work, and others, and it, as we've, hopefully are coming out of this really challenging time, you know, may we help find continued ways to help support and enhance the work they're doing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Melissa, why are you here? Where are we, do you think, with providing service under the issues of COVID and restriction as far as coming back with the services we're able to provide?
We're providing them.
Okay, as far as seeing clients, seeing people, are we 100% back to where we were, do you think?
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Pirskey, I would say that we are fully moving into the new world of providing care, so will it ever be the same as it was before? No. In terms of the Human Services Department, we are fully out in the community, we're utilizing all the tools in the toolbox now, so that we both, we're doing a hybrid approach. And that's actually not only just for good service and quality, but also what the community's asking for, is to have options and flexibility. So, we're out doing all the work that we were before, but we're doing it in a hybrid way.
Okay, and how are you feeling about that?
Oh, we love it, and I think the community loves it too, because we can ask, what do you prefer, instead of just assuming that we're, everybody wants the same service in the same way, and that's actually not the case. So, yeah, we're, I, I'm feeling really good about where we're at, and from a human services standpoint, and keeping all the innovations that we got to gain during COVID, and also going back to a lot of in-person work too, in the community. Yeah, it's good.
Thank you, Melissa.
All right, thank you so much, have a good day.
You too, thank you. We will, at this time, close the Human Services Board meeting and reconvene the regular county board meeting. We're up to item I, Parks, with Ben Anderson here. Good morning, Ben, it is still morning. We're looking to get the Parks Annual Report.
Yeah, good morning Commissioners, Ben Anderson, Parks Director. The first agenda item I have for you today is item I-1, can be found on packet pages 258 through 333, and it is the Parks Department 2021 Annual Report. I am going to move rather quickly through some of these slides.
And maybe you appreciate it.
Yep, apparently. So, if you have questions as I move through on something, and I didn't stop, please just let me know. These are just all of the administrative portion, we'll move into some pictures. The planning goals for 2021, we were able to accomplish many of the, many of these, and there's a few on there that we're, we're still continuing to work on. 2022 proposed goals, what we're working on currently this year. Planning and property, so in 2021, we reviewed approximately 75 acres adjacent to Mississippi River County Park, and approximately 298 acres in the Cold Spring along the Sauk River. In 2021, we were able to acquire 1.66 acres for the Beaver Island Trail Extension. We also worked with the City of Wait Park for, to put in a mining moratorium. We worked with the DNR and the city to stop a proposed mining operation that would have shared a direct boundary with the Quarry Park and Nature Preserve. And then we worked with building facilities, and the Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District to upgrade a deed restriction at Miller Landing, also the Westside Service Center, and that just allows us to develop an aggregate surface walking trail behind the county service center. Parkland Dedication Fund, we updated the Parkland Dedication Ordinance. Basically, that update just put a process in place on how to utilize those funds, and also made them available, so that the townships can utilize them as well. The Recorey Trail, they continue to work on finalizing their Phase III construction engineer documents, and they work to secure the final funding need for construction of their Phase III. And to my understanding, is they're hoping to construct that yet this year. Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails, this is a statewide organization that I served as the vice chair on, and essentially, it's an organization that we work with the legislatures in St. Paul to advocate for park and trail needs throughout. There's over 120 members, consisting of cities, counties, organizations, individuals, and businesses located throughout greater Minnesota. In 2021, COVID continued to affect our communities, however, our parks and trails stayed completely open to the public. There were some restrictions early on in the year, but we were able to open them up, and we, you know, provided that physical, mental, and emotional benefits that people needed, and still continue to need throughout that. We also entered into an agreement with Great River Greening to do about 90 acres of buckthorn removal within Quarry Park. Just a map that shows where our parks and trails are throughout the county, a graph that the percentage broken up by district, the acres per district, or per park, how big our parks are. In our, an unfortunate thing that we found this past in 2021 was an invasive flowering rush. One of our maintenance staff was out on the Lake Wobegon Trail, just west of Melrose, and saw this very beautiful flower that was flowering along the bank. Unfortunately, it was identified as a flowering rush through the Minnesota DNR. So, we're currently working with the Minnesota DNR, the Sauk River Watershed District, Stearns County Coalition of Lakes Association, and the Stearns County Environmental Services to address this new infestation, and to identify how widespread it may or may not be at this point. Unfortunately, in 2021, Quarry Park did see its third drowning. Development, winter multi-use trails. One of the biggest complaints that we hear during the winter when we're grooming for ski trails is that our walking trails are too short, so in an effort to address that, we extended the multi-use trail at Warner Lake County Park from 1.7K to about 5K, or approximately three miles in length, and that has been very, very well received. We also groomed trails at Oak Township and Two Rivers Lakes County Park in a, in an attempt to get those parks better utilized, and more utilized in the winter as well. We completed the Dairyland Trail Extension with the connection of the Dairyland Trail to the Ball Field in El Rosa, and we reworked that parking lot as well, so the Dairyland Trail is now 14 miles in length. Beaver Island Trail, as was mentioned, we were able to acquire that 1.66 acres right away, and in December, the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission recommended that this project be funding, be funded legacy dollars, that one, about $1.2 million for construction, which we hope to complete next summer. Through a La Sarge Sands Outdoor Heritage Grant with the Stearns County Soil and Water Conservation District, contractor was hired to restore approximately 18 acres of oak savanna, and another three acres of native prairie at Mississippi River County Park. Worked with an Eagle Scout to put in a bridge at Kramer Lake Wildwood County Park. We developed the disc golf course and provided upgrades with the help of Semstone and the St. Cloud Disc Golf Club for their donations, and they also volunteered to help put these in. That's 36 keypads that went in, and the 18-hole disc golf course up there, and we continue to make upgrades as well. These are just goals and responsibilities of our maintenance department. Inspections and trainings that staff complete and attend. Maintenance hours by activity, so as you can see in this graph, we capture these through our Maintenance Connection Program, on what our maintenance staff are completing out in the field. General maintenance and park maintenance are the two top, where we spend most of our hours. In this next page, you know, what does general maintenance, what does park maintenance? So, general maintenance is things such as mowing, landscaping, grounds care, sign, signage, working on bridges and culverts, and then park maintenance is, you know, cleaning the parks, caretaker activities, stocking toilet paper, making sure the park's safe, and then deliveries of such items. In 2021, we spent 584 hours removing storm-damaged trees from parked and recreational trails. It's a very busy summer with tree removal, especially towards the end. Replaced a culvert along the Dairyland Trail. Completed our annual maintenance, include air spraying and crack sealing and seal coating We reclaimed about 700 feet of the trail up by Holding Ford. We had huge boulders that were underneath the bed that were pushing up through, causing significant hazards for bikers and rollerbladers and such coming through that area. We worked with a contractor to do brush and tree removal between Holding Ford and, or up by Holding Ford, and then a section near Albany. This was really twofold, one, to push the brush back from the edge of the trail, and two, to mitigate some of that, all those hours that we spend doing tree removal when storms come through. Other spring projects, canoe site, updated the canoe site at Oak Township, put a garage door on the building at Rockville. We have installed parking stops at Rockville, and we completed a prescribed burn at Kramer Lake Wildwood County Park. We wanted to capture the last year, the summer drought. This picture's here, is at Heim's Mill, where the Sauk River enters the Mississippi. On the left-hand side, you can see what it typically looks like, and on the right-hand side, what it looked like in July, if it walked all the way across. Along with the drought, though, we were able to complete some needed projects up by the covered bridge in Holding Ford, under the Two Rivers Lake River. We worked to remove some old pilings that we could actually get all the way down to ground level, and actually cut them off below the ground level, that would typically hang up, floating cattail mats or other debris that then would block water from, from moving through as well, and then we were able to fix some abutments for the bridge through there as well. Other summer projects, split rail fence on the Wobegon, spraying noxious weeds, and lots of washouts that we repair. We removed a bridge at Mississippi River County Park when working with Environmental Services to put in an overflow through that area. It was kind of an odd bridge, it was about four feet up in the air that just went over this little area, and it was, I don't know, it was almost more unsafe than it was worth to have it out there. So, we were able to get that removed, and it was well-received, especially by our skiers in the winter, because they don't have this sharp little incline they need to go up. One unfortunate event that did happen last fall as well, is that we had a significant washout up at Lake Sylvia County Park. We had a four-inch rainfall that came through there in a short amount of time, washed probably six to eight dump truck loads of sediment into the lake, so we had to work with the DNR and SWU Soil and Water Conservation District to remove that sediment from there, and we're currently working on a plan with the Soil and Water Conservation District to restore that area, plant some native vegetation, remove the road from there to hopefully mitigate this from occurring in the future. 2021, we spent about 127 hours grooming winter cross-country ski trails. Lake Cronus Regional Park, they had a great year last year, day use was way up, probably the most exciting activity that is occurring, or had occurred out there, or started last year, is the replacement of the Shower House Building, and that is, was supposed to be completed as of April 1st this year. I will be down there on, this Thursday, touring that facility, so we're excited to see that. Typical, just regular maintenance at Fairhaven Mill County Park. Overall county budget, our park budgeted expenses is about $1.3 million. And overall, the park fund revenues ended 13% above the annual budget, and Quarry Park permit revenues exceeded their annual budget by over $36,000, or 19%, and our expenditures ended right on for the budget year.
Ben, right there, now, it says, okay, the budget and the expenses, revenue, $1,400,000, expenses, $1,300,000, is this, am I interpreting it, Parks Department actually made $100,000?
Yes, we were able to put about $90,000 into our park fund balance last year.
Great, thank you.
This just breaks down the revenue a little bit further, obviously Quarry Park is our biggest revenue source. And then when we break that down even further, our daily permits are our number one, followed by our annual permits sold at Quarry Park. Overall, we're seeing a revenue trend that is increasing, and that's true for the Quarry Park permit revenue trend as well. This is a chart that just shows the Quarry Park permit revenue by month. Obviously, as we hit the May, June, July, August, our revenue goes way up, and then it settles back down for the little cooler months, so the swimming is really what drives the majority of our revenue out at the park. Number of daily permits out at Quarry Park has been saying, staying fairly consistent, however, our number of annual permits, we've seen a pretty good increase over the years, and we hope to continue to see that, and push for that as well. Copy of our fee schedule. Shelter rental fees for 2021, you can see, went way up. Obviously, 2020, when the COVID was, was, was full-blown and implemented, we had most of our stuff shut down or closed and not available for rental, but we were able to rebound back in 2021, and people are utilizing those facilities again, we're seeing that in 2022 as well. Grants that were requested and secured. Donations, donations have been increasing over the last few years as well, people have been very giving. They come in the form of memorials and benches, like I said, last year, the disc golf course upgraded, the archery ranges receive great support as well, how we can get a little bit through the Lake Wobegon, and then just other parks and trails, and then through Quarry Park. This is our financial estimated cost per park, Quarry Park costing the most to operate and maintain, and, you know, it's just, it's a facility that takes a lot of people out there to create that safe environment, and then followed by the Lake Wobegon in Mississippi in 2021. Just a graph that's easier to show where the top three, and where most of the funds are expended through our park budget. Other projects, it's important to note that these are funds that are not part of our operating budget, they come from the County Capital Building Fund, County Capital Improvement Project Funds as well. Just the different amenities, so we have lots of amenities, lots of things for people to do within our parks. Reservations, this is the reservations that are just captured through our reservation system, so things like events at the Nature Center, youth group camps, things of that, like that, we saw almost 11,000 people. Moonlight Ski looked a little bit different in 2021, we ended up doing a sampler, where people went out to all four of the parks, and then were eligible to either, to win Quarry Park Parking Pass, Annual Pass, or maple syrup donated from the Carlson family at Wildwood out at Kramer Lake. Had lots of events, I'm not going to go through the list one by one, but our parks and trails were heavily used for lots of events throughout the year, and they continue to be used, did a fall color survey. Quarry Park visitors came from 80 different Minnesota counties and 45 different states. This data, we're able to collect through our gatekeepers during the summer months, so it's important to note that these is only numbers that we collect from May through, essentially Memorial Day through Labor Day. But it's a top 10 counties, you can see on the left-hand side there, and then Stearns and the seven-county metro area during the summer months are all, pretty much tied at 33% at where our users come from. So, people are willing to drive that hour. are willing to drive that hour, hour and a half to get up to the park and come enjoy it. Just our different rock climbing and scuba diving permits. This is up from previous years. Typically, rock climbing, we're around that 250 and scuba diving, we usually hang closer to around that 10. So we are seeing an increase in desire to do that. These are free. We do not charge anything for these. On 2021, we did partner with the Great River Regional Library System to make Corey Park more accessible at no cost. And each of the libraries listed below has two passes available for checkout at any given time. This was implemented in about July and they were reserved 92 times last year. So they are getting used and we'll continue to push that as a use, as an opportunity for people as well. In 2021, we saw 255 volunteers that worked a little over 1,000 hours doing activities in in seven different parks. This is something that we're, a number that we're always trying to increase. And with that, that wraps up the 2021 annual report. I don't know if there's any questions or comments.
Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, we'll move to item two. Commissioner Linsmeyer.
Do we have, you know, this morning, we had to spend some time on an unpleasant topic of people using park properties for dumping. Besides example we talked about this morning, what's it like in the other, in the balance of our property? To what extent does that happen, if at all?
Actually, it's a fairly rare occurrence. Luckily, within our county parks and along our trails, I would say, if it was even a half dozen times a year, that would be high. So one to two is more typical.
Okay. I'm encouraged that you talked about volunteering. If the park, you know, challenged the park board, are there incentives we could build in to our system to encourage more of that? Encourage more donations? Would ask them, you know, the reason we put people on the park board are the types of folks, because we hope they're some of the sharper knives in our population. What would be incentives to encourage more of that? Does publicity work? You know, somebody does something wonderful. I know, you know, for elected folks, that's that's an incentive. The, if they're willing to spend some time on that, what would be a good way to encourage more of that? Yeah, ask them for their opinion and do it on a semi-consistent basis. Maybe make it a typical item on your agenda.
Right. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Linsmeyer. That is a discussion that came up a couple of months ago about how we can potentially, you know, incentivize some of that. So that is something we'll be talking about as we move forward, so.
And also, your colleagues in other, other counties or cities, what their experience is. But yeah, I'm encouraged by the success that you've had already. So, good job.
Thank you. And I know we want to keep moving along. Thank you. That was incredible amount of information. Appreciate it being in the board packets. I think building off of what Commissioner Linsmeyer was asking about, if there's a way to help make sure we all are knowing when you've got, you've got events coming up, your social media, you do a great job on Facebook. Some of us might not be on there as much as others. And if there's a way that we can help amplify some of that, I think that's another way that we can be helping spread those volunteer opportunities too. So, calendar invites, any other way that you think you can help us, help you with that would be, would be meaningful, at least for me.
When you're soliciting gifts, part of the, part of the success is, and there's no good way to do this, but determining individual people's hot button. For example, there are people that'll donate to the library, that may not donate to their church, or may not donate to the park, and so on. I mean, all the possibilities, or the Boys and Girls Club or whatever. So I have no wisdom to share with you relative to finding out what lights people's fire. But, you know, keep yours open and, yeah, utilize your park commissioners to, or brainstorming for ideas on that.
Okay, Ben, you got another item here.
Yeah, I guess.
Mr. Chair, just let me, I'm just gonna finish up on this too. And Lee, that's a good idea. We can be maybe better ambassadors perhaps in promoting. So, yeah, good idea. And Ben, too, you received accolades last, when we presented to the park board on 2021 and also, just thank you very much for your efforts in the entire years. Greatly appreciated. And then just with response to this morning's dialogue about the property north of Mississippi River Park, I really hope, you know, again, appreciate your support and advocating for the best interest of the park and our commission's recommendations, so.
I think we're ready now for item two.
Okay. I was just asking if the, Mr. Chair, if the, you guys could accept the 2021.
Does anybody make a motion to accept the Parks Department annual report?
You know, with all of the environmental restrictions, open shoreline, whether it's on a lake, a river, or even wetland, is almost a dubious asset because there are so many limitations and what you can do with that anymore unless there's already a structure or improvements in place already and you're removing or improving them. So it isn't quite the slam dunk that it was in the relative, even relatively recent past.
Okay, it's been moved to accept the report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Move in second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. I think we're ready for number two.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be in touch on the.
Well, maybe not quite.
Well, yeah, we'll be in touch on the township matter.
Right. Thank you. The second agenda item I have for you to consider today is item I two. Can be found on packet pages 334 through 336. And it's a request that the board adopt resolution authorizing application for funding to acquire winter recreation equipment through the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission connecting people to the outdoors grant. This is a joint application or would be a joint application between Stearns, Isanty, and Sherburne County. The grant request would be to purchase cross-country skis, cross-country ski poles, boots, snowshoes, snowshoe poles, and snowgaters, along with a trailer to transport and store the equipment. Stearns, Isanty, and Sherburne Counties would all evenly, evenly share all annual costs such as, but not limited, insurance, maintenance, and the replacement of the equipment. I did include the estimated budget. It's between that $35,000 and $40,000. We're not, haven't completely finalized that yet. There is no match request that we're asking for. And yeah, with that, I'd take any questions.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve and just to help us keep going. And I see that the other two counties' boards have already approved this request.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move in second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ben.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
We're up to item G, administration. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This relates to our broadband project and back to the original, the first federal funding that, that local governments received, if you recall, the CARES funding. And we encouraged townships at that time to, to take the CARES funding. The requirements for spending them were a little, a little more strict than the, than the ARP dollars that we have before us now. And if they didn't have qualifying expenditures, then they could designate that, those funds to go back to the county. And we were able to show plenty of, plenty of expenditures that met the qualifications. And so it's come, come from a couple of townships asking about those funds and could those be allocated towards the broadband project, credited towards what, what we were asking them. And so that's, that's what the action before you today is to allow those amounts of dollars, which in total is 267,000, but that does include a couple of cities, that we would credit back to those townships towards what we've asked them to do towards the broadband project. And then I've suggested in here that, that if there's some leftover monies, in other words, if, if some, and there are a couple here, if they have more of credit than what we've actually asked them, then we could pool that and maybe use that for some areas that, that didn't access ARP or there's some other issues like that. So this, these dollars were, you know, somewhat of a windfall, but they are back in our general fund now. But I felt like it was at least not an unreasonable request by these townships to, to do that. And I know it, it certainly will help with a couple of townships to help them to make their decision as well. As you can see, there's, there's some amounts here that, you know, that make a difference definitely. And so I didn't, I didn't prepare a resolution. I just thought the board could do that by motion and then we'll implement it kind of as I've described here. We credit it if they're in, if the township chooses to be in. I mean, we're not just gonna, and we're, would only allow it to be spent on the broadband project. So if they adopt the resolution, we've asked them to, we would use this to reduce what they, what they committed to.
So the motion.
I don't want to get into doing like a partial project or anything anywhere. We want to keep this as whole as we possibly can. For example, Main Prairie, I just stepped out and talked to that township officer because they told me that they were not going to be in. They have a fair amount of money, 18,000, so I made that known to him. I don't think it's going to change their mind. So then that money would, would be available to put into the project, perhaps with a township that didn't get ARP dollars or something like that.
So the motion that you'd like to see is?
Yeah, I think, I think just to approve the use of the leftover township CARES dollars credited towards the broadband project is, I guess, how I would word it.
Is there anyone wanting to make that motion? Okay, it's been moved. Is there?
Second, Dan.
It moved and second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Linsmeyer.
Your mind reader, I wrote a note to myself to ask about Main Prairie Township. I didn't want to bring it up when we were on that other topic with one of their, one of their elected folks here. But thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, in that particular township, if you looked at the map, one of our proposals just covers sort of a little northern chunk of it. But it does, and then, so then they're in like the phase two that really isn't planned yet. And I know, you know, I just heard from what the one officer there that they have, they have roads they want to spend the money on and didn't think that we should be subsidizing a private entity in this endeavor. So I don't know if that's the thought for the, the other township members, but that's the discussion we just had.
Sounds like at least they thought about it.
Yeah.
So that's encouraging.
Does meager counties broadband spill over into Main Prairie?
I think, I think it, oh, I'd have to look at the map, Commissioner Morgan, but, you know, they do come in a little ways into some of the townships here. And, and we had, you know, some little pockets that they made proposals into cover, but most of those were covered in the broader proposals that we had.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there anything else? Seeing nothing, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, Mike, Terrell, how are we looking on broadband from the state? Are we going to be able to, as far as the legislature moving forward, are we going to be able to get those calls?
Yeah, it's, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Percy, that's a good question. As you, as you probably noticed, I copied you on a couple of emails to our legislative delegation yesterday because I was hearing from AMC that, that there's some talk in the House side of reducing the allocation to the border, border project down to what? Was it like 30 million or something? It was considerably lower than what's recent, you know, was contemplated before. And so we have, we have really good data to show our, our elected officials because we have those proposals in hand. And, and anyway, you kind of saw what I laid out for them. So hopefully, they keep it at over $100 million. And, and what I've been told is, is right now, they're ready to have a border-to-border grant process, competitive grant process. They're waiting on the federal government to approve, approve the, how they're using the dollars. And then they will have that process and then they'll quickly have another process. So we're hearing that they're going to have two, two border-to-border grant processes this year, which is good for us because, you know, we're prepared to move. So if you happen to be talking to anybody in the legislature, you know, we certainly need, we, we are, you know, we put in, you put in $16 million and we probably going to need that much again to make, from the state to make this work, somewhere in that area.
Thank you. Anything else? Otherwise, are we okay with going right into item K? All right. Okay, we are going to go into item K, which is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03 subdivision one, B for discussion of labor agreements between the county of Stearns and LES jail dispatch for period of January 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2024. We are in closed session. We are in closed session. We are back in the open session to act upon the discussion from the closed session. Do we have a motion concerning what was discussed in the closed session?
I'll move, move that we adopt the recommendations to, for settling this remaining bargaining unit.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Recommendation has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. What are you gonna do?
We are down to issue aye by commissioners at start. Commissioner Clark, do you have anything today?
Two quick things reinforcing what Mike talked to us about with regard to talking with our delegation, our legislative delegation or others. They're doing omnibus bills on the floor this week. While the bills are really far apart in general, there's some things that are really in agreement. And so them hearing from us is, is important. And then secondly, there was a lot of conversation about some common sense modifications on the vacation rentals. Hopefully staff will be able to come back, have an agenda item at some point that we could talk some more or maybe adopt some of those simple things.
Commissioner Persky?
Just a couple of things. First of all, May 6th, Highway 23 is going to have a groundbreaking and that's going to be out in Rosco at the roadside tavern, 11:30. So, you know, we're looking forward to getting that project. Well, it's already underway if you've been driving out there. But actually to break a little ground on that. And then also going back to, to Mike's introduction at the, at the start, appreciation of staff and also just the appreciation of everybody that's left in this room as well. We started this morning, it was standing room only and perhaps exceeding even the fire code, but nice to see everybody hanging in here.
Throw them all away. Our ridiculous commentary and extended discussion made them sick and they left.
Yeah, so anyway, yeah, we, we continue to move on, so.
Commissioner Landsweyer.
Relative to the overall budget process, I have walked by the room while you were, you and you two have met with various department heads during the process. Does it, is it typical that the department heads just come in with a proposal for just the oncoming year? Do any of them, I'm thinking particularly maybe the elected department head, come in with say a multi-year thing so you can see what they're trying to build towards? How does that go? I should have sat into it and learned it myself.
This is where we do multi-year planning such as capital items and then certainly road projects, right? So besides that, it's pretty much.
Yeah, we only have one year ahead.
You know, in front of us during that process, but we often talk about what's, what's coming, you know, what's coming into the future too. I've, I've been with jurisdictions where we introduced at least two-year budgeting and, you know, the, the structure that we work within only requires and, you know, the state structure and all that only has one year. So it, it kind of makes that second year a little less meaningful, but it is good to look forward. And we do have those conversations.
And Mr. Chair and Mike, I mean, it would be fair to say both. We've got the strategic planning process that department heads and others participated. And then for some, whether it's public works, our building facilities, parks, they all have longer-term plans that give them some flexibility, but we can really see where it's going. I didn't know if that gets to anything you're talking about. Some others, we don't have that same thing. I would say in human services, the laws seem to change so much that might be a little tricky.
Yeah. And capital, only the other item would be the IT.
Yes, I meant to say IT too, sorry.
Getting to be big price tags and there is multi-year planning for that, so.
Okay. I mean, I'm not, this isn't a criticism, it's an information thing. And, uh, cause I've, I've had questions about, not so much a process, but, uh, you know, we get lobbied on the wish list, you know? So, uh, that's helpful. And then maybe a clarification too. We got some right-of-way plots in the back that need signatures. Is it just the chair that can sign those? You know, on a case like today, the chair isn't available. Uh, how, how does that work? I've never, never thought about this. Any ideas?
Well, we'll probably wait for Steve to come back to sign them.
Okay.
His name is on all the documents I looked at.
His name are on there.
Have to redo them.
I don't know that there's anything there that's critical to happen today.
All right. All right.
Okay, I really don't have anything except the all-time record. As long as I've been on the board, I think it's a little after 1:30. And if the library.
Should we state you want to?
If the library board had showed up today, we may have broken that.
Oh, that's true.
Other than that.
Oh, this is, this is back in the day?
Okay, no back in the day stories.
This meeting is adjourned.